Second 2013 meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call, please?
Dennis Romeo.
Here.
Jason Woosley.
Here.
Doug Kaufman is absent. Kimberly Locke.
Here.
Dagny Stapleton.
Here.
Kevin Wysocki.
Here. Thank you. Item three on the agenda is public comment. This item is for either general public comment or for public comment on an action item. If commenting on an action item, please place the agenda item number on the request to speak form. They're available to my right, your left, with Michelle. Seeing no public comment, I will close that portion. We'll move to item four, which is approval of the minutes of the October 17th, 2012 workshop.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes of October 17th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? No abstaining. Let the record show that Commissioner Kaufman has arrived. Traffic pretty bad. Item four B, approval of minutes from the November 8th, 2012 meeting. I believe we do have one correction. Commissioner Stapleton?
I do. On page six, on, well, halfway down page six, the motion. It states the motion carried, and Commissioner Stapleton abstaining. I was actually a nay.
Okay, I'll get that changed.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle? Did you get that? Okay, can we have a motion to approve the amended minutes?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Locke. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, city council lays on reports. I see none. Item six, discussion and potential direction to staff regarding the 2013 Planning Commission schedule. It's a bit early in the agenda.
Claudia Hansen, Planning Engineering Manager. It was brought up at the last meeting that there were some questions and concerns regarding the schedule for the, for 2013, and I believe it's in my packet. If I get to the right page. This evening being one of them, there were questions of why we were having this on the 2nd of January. It was the approved calendar from a month, a couple months ago, so we put this item on the agenda for discussion from the Planning Commission if there's any other changes for the calendar for the year.
Okay, what's the will of the commission? I believe the feeling initially was we shouldn't have a meeting the day after New Year's.
I believe the other issue, well, we've already issued this, or noticed this one, but I think July was the other.
Well, I believe we have a July 5th meeting also, and I think that's Commissioner Romeo, where the discussion was headed, that they're not only difficult for commissioners to attend, but also for the public and applicants, and if there's any way to move them out a day or two days, a week, would be appreciated.
Mr. Chair. Right over here. Hi, it's Michelle Fournier. The July meeting is scheduled for the 2nd. It would have been scheduled for Wednesday, but that's the holiday, and city council is meeting the next day, so we're scheduled for July 2nd.
Possibly the last week of June.
It is what it is.
Well, you're, by your bylaws, you're required to have at least one meeting a month, so you wouldn't need one in July. We can look at a date the following week.
Okay, could we get a roughed-up schedule and maybe email it to us?
Yeah. Was that the only other one, was July?
Yes, that's from my recollection, Claudia, that's what it was.
This is Commissioner Stapleton. Without looking at the dates, it's hard to say, but I think we just wanted to look at the dates around any holidays to make sure that we had thought about it in advance, so if we could get a copy of the calendar, that would be great.
Sure, I think that was, check with Michelle, but I think that was sent out, but we'll send it out again, and we'll look at, we'll bring back an option for July.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Thank you, Claudia.
You're welcome.
Item seven, public hearings. First public hearing is LDC 12-00015, McCarran Center. Will the applicant or the applicant's representative please step forward? And please identify yourselves before you speak, and you have 15 minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Stephen Mollath. I'm outside special counsel for the University of Nevada, the applicant on the MSFL McCarran Center. This is a zone change from an annexed property of 104 acres without any present zoning designation pursuant to RMC 1808 105 to PUD. It's consistent with the master plan, and it was previously approved by the Planning Commission. Because of a notice error, we're back tonight to rehear the matter. I have here with me tonight Melissa Lindell from Wood Rogers, who's going to be the centerpiece of the presentation. Together with her are soils, hydrology, and traffic engineers Steve Strickland, Mickey South, or Mickey Smith, and Paul Soleggi. If you have any questions for them, they'll be happy to answer those questions. I also have Ron Zurich, the Vice President of Administration and Finance for the University of Nevada. He's going to discuss some matters with you concerning the importance of this project to the university. I previously provided to the council two letters, one dated December 18th and one dated December 20th, which are contained in your packet. The purpose of these submittals was to, in essence, summarize and simplify the planning and zoning issues that were previously reviewed by the Planning Commission, and to put those together for you for this hearing tonight. They consist of the letter and three exhibits. The first exhibit is the map that you see in front of you delineating the three segmented portions of this property, the 104 acres, which is subject to the application tonight, the main station field lab, 812 acres, which is the farm area, and then the RTC to be acquired property of 165 acres. That's the components of, makes up the thousand plus or minus acres. Also, I've submitted in my letter a summary of the technical and planning reasons why the PUD zoning is appropriate for the 104 acres. That's exhibit two, and Melissa is going to go through that exhibit with you. The third exhibit is the list of the public outreach that the university conducted since this application was processed and submitted with the city of Reno. Ron Zurich is going to discuss that with you, along with a handout that I think you have outlining the concerns that the university has to get the proper public in foot, the conservation easements that the university is considering, and other matters. The December 20th letter contains a detailed review of the findings for approval, and those will also be discussed by Melissa, and it kind of puts together on one sheet of paper all the things that you need to consider in making the findings for this project. Once Melissa finishes her presentation, Mr. Zurich will discuss with you his handout and exhibit three to the December 18th letter. We would like to reserve some time for comment as to any comments made by the public. So if you have any questions, if you don't have any questions, I'll turn it over to Melissa, who will go through the technical aspects of the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, briefly, Melissa, I'm going to stop you right here. I've been advised by legal, we need to do disclosures now before we get any farther into the public hearing, so Commissioner Wysocki, do you have any disclosures?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have received several emails regarding this project and a phone call and discussion with one of the applicant's representatives.
Commissioner Stapleton?
Yes, I had a conversation with an interested member of the community and have received a few emails. Last time this was heard, I had a conversation with the applicant's representative. Also, as I was reminded after the last hearing in October of 2011, I emailed President Johnson in regards to my personal opinion on Wolf Pack Meats, which is located on the property adjacent to the applicant's property. I also needed to disclose that I am a member of the Great Basin Community Food Co-op's Board of Directors, and based upon conversations with the city attorney and the staff at the Ethics Commission, I was advised that I should clearly and in detail disclose this relationship and any history I have around this issue. So, here goes. For the record, many members of the food co-op, as well as the co-op's GM, are opposed to the closing of Wolf Pack Meats. Opposition to the closing of Wolf Pack Meats and also opposition to the McCarran Crossing case have been organized by members of the co-op and through the co-op. However, I have not been actively involved in this opposition, nor in discussions at the co-op regarding this issue. The board of the co-op has not voted to take an official position on either of these issues, and as far as I know, the co-op has no official relationship contractual or financial with Wolf Pack Meats. I do not believe that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would be materially affected by their commitment in a private capacity, in this case, to serve the members of the food co-op. I believe that a reasonable person appointed to the Planning Commission should see the analysis of this case in light of the criteria in our master plan and the land use issues at hand, and be able to exercise an independence of judgment without any material effect. It is for these reasons that I will be voting on this item, and do not believe that I have a disqualifying conflict of interest, and I have given the previous detailed disclosure in order to avoid any appearance of impropriety. Thank you.
Commissioner Woosley.
I have had conversations during the original, the first time this came around, and then recently you've had several emails.
Commissioner Kaufman?
I've had conversations with the applicant's representative both before and this time, and also received emails.
Commissioner Locke?
I had a meeting with the applicant's representative.
And I have received numerous emails previously, and this time I've met with the applicant and their representative. Marilyn, does that satisfy you?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Melissa, I apologize for the interruption. It was just a legal issue we had to do, so please continue.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers, and the subject parcel is part of a 1,081-acre main station field lab owned by UNR. There are three sections of this property, and the first is the subject 104 acres that's located along McCarran Boulevard. The second section is the RTC 165 acres, and that is in the process of being purchased and will be used for roadway right-of-way as well as flood and wetlands mitigation. And the third piece is the 812-acre remaining main station field lab property, and that's the majority of the site, and that will be, continue to be used and saved for the main station field lab use by UNR and the College of Agriculture, Biotechnology, and Natural Resources. Wolf Pack Meats is located in this main station field lab area north of the subject 104 acres. Wolf Pack Meats will not be impacted or closed as a result of this rezoning. It's a compatible use with the future PUD uses. The closest building to the PUD site is the retail portion of Wolf Pack Meats, and this building, as well as others which are further away, will be separated from the PUD area by a 50-foot wide right-of-way for clean waterway, as well as a 30-foot wide landscape buffer. The separation will put the nearest Wolf Pack Meats building at least 100 feet away and other buildings at least 200 feet away. In addition, UNR has committed to provide a written disclosure to any future buyers or tenants of the University of McCarran Center project in here to inform them about the existence of Wolf Pack Meats and details with regards to its operations. Prior to annexation, the subject 104 acres were analyzed for technical purposes to determine what the appropriate zoning and uses should be in the city. This is the only piece of property that is located in the city of Reno. All the rest of the property is in Washoe County, and there are no plans to annex any of that. It was determined that PUD zoning was the only appropriate classification for the property in the city, and that the proposed uses in the PUD, being office, commercial, business, research park establishments, would be appropriate for the property and compatible with the surrounding properties based on the following. Number one, per the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, the property is located in the Truckee Meadows Service Area and the city of Reno sphere of influence. According to regional plan policies, these are areas where services are to be provided, annexation is planned, and development is encouraged. Per the regional plan, the property is not shown on the regional rural development area map as being within a rural area, and is not shown on the regional development constraints map as a constrained area with floodway areas, water bodies, or steep terrain. Per FEMA flood maps, the majority of the site is within the AE flood zone. It is not in the floodway, and it is within the critical flood zone one. However, if mitigated in accordance with city requirements, is not restricted from being developed. Development of the property will require filling one foot above the flood level and compensating for that fill by lowering the land in the same flood storage area at a ratio of one to one. This site can fully comply with the city of Reno critical flood pool ordinance requirements approved by the city council in October of 2010, and UNR is even willing to provide mitigation in excess of the one-to-one ratio. The northernly portion of the main station field lab in this area has been shown as part of the Truckee River Flood Project mitigation area for years. Per the project maps, however, the subject 104 area in white has been also shown since at least June of 2007 as an area for potential development. Per the city of Reno Open Space and Greenways Plan, which is part of the Reno Master Plan, the property is not shown as open space and is not designated for parks, recreation, or open space use. Per the master plan, the property is designated as a special planning area, and this is very similar to other areas in the city such as South Meadows, Business Park, Damone Ranch, and Somerset, all designated for special planning area. Per the master plan, special planning area is appropriate for large holdings which could be developed with a mix of land use, and is appropriate for areas undergoing a transition in land use to a more intense development area or areas where investment is encouraged. There are only three zoning classifications that are consistent with the special planning area designation, and that being open space, mixed use, and PUD. The site is not appropriate for mixed use zoning because it is not located within a center or corridor plan. The open space designation is not appropriate for the site because it is not shown on the city of Reno Open Space and Greenways Plan as an open space site, and is not shown on the regional development constraints map as a constrained area suitable for open space. The site, however, is appropriate for PUD zoning and development as it is in, within the Truckee Meadows Service Area and sphere of influence, and it is already designated special planning area on the master plan. With the appropriate zoning determined to be PUD, it was then necessary to determine what the appropriate uses in the PUD should be in the city of Reno. Prior to annexation, this site was zone general rural in the, in the Washoe County, and the uses permitted in that general rural zone include, among others, data centers, custom manufacturing, and high-technology industries, all subject to special use permits. These are all uses that have been carried over to the proposed PUD in the city of Reno. The site is located adjacent to McCarran Boulevard, a major arterial which is soon to be expanded to six lanes. In addition, Mill Street and other arterial tees into McCarran Boulevard near the central portion of the site providing excellent access to this property. The site is in close proximity to Interstate 80, US 395, and the Reno Tahoe International Airport. Utilities, including sanitary sewer, water, natural gas, and electricity are existing either on or adjacent to the site parallel to McCarran Boulevard. Uses to the north include Wolf Pack Meats, which is an industrial-type use compatible with the proposed uses, and uses to the west include business park and research uses similar to what is proposed in the PUD. There is an existing lack of large parcels suitable to business and research park use in close proximity to major facilities with utilities, and the creation of economic development and diversification opportunities is important to our community, and this site meets the criteria of a property where investment should be encouraged. Considering all the attributes of the site, including its size, location on a major arterial, the surrounding uses, and the availability of infrastructure, as well as the need in our area to provide for economic development opportunities, it was determined that the appropriate uses in the PUD should accommodate business and research park ventures. A mix of office, commercial flex, and business park uses were then included in the PUD. In summary, I believe all the findings for this project can be met. Briefly, regional and Reno city plans and policies support the zone change to PUD. There are no overriding development constraints on this property. Flooding can be mitigated in accordance with city ordinances. The PUD zoning is consistent with the Reno Master Plan. The uses outlined in the PUD would be compatible with the surrounding uses to the west and Wolf Pack Meats. Other UNR property, the 812 acres, will be saved and used for UNR and College of Agricultural uses. City staff has supported the zone change and acknowledged that the submitted hydrology and traffic reports were complete and acceptable, and the project was previously considered and approved by the Planning Commission but needed to come back simply due to a noticing error. This concludes my remarks. I thank you for your time and your attention to this matter. Our entire team will be available to answer questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Please identify yourself for the record.
Yes, sir. For the record, my name is Ron Zurich, and I'm the Vice President for Administration and Finance at UNR. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee. President Johnson, who was called out of town unexpectedly, sends his sincere regrets that he's not able to be with you here tonight. In the few minutes remaining, I would just like to quickly highlight several opportunities for community outreach that we have had since our last meeting with you just over a year ago. Since that time, UNR has hosted or participated in more than two dozen community-based forums, town halls, open houses, and meetings, all to listen and pursue ideas and concerns with interested individuals and groups, and we believe that together, important progress has been made on several fronts. With regards to Wolf Pack Meats, working with a newly-formed stakeholders group comprised of customers, representatives of the locally-grown food industry, and private meatpacking businesses, we have found a compromise solution to keep Wolf Pack Meats open, operational, and financially sustainable for the foreseeable future, and we know this was important to many individuals. High desert farming. The university is sponsoring the high desert farming initiative to support locally-grown production, and is already underway at the 48-acre Valley Road Field property just minutes from our main campus, with plans for six new hoop houses, one greenhouse, a new produce packing facility, and an area for soil mixing and composting. There is also sufficient land at this location for expansion of this and other planned projects. Flood control. The university continues to participate in regional flood planning efforts with the Truckee Meadows Flood Management Project, and while the University McCarran Center proposal meets current mitigation requirements, UNR is offering to go beyond those requirements. UNR is committed to exceeding the current one-to-one mitigation ratio and will propose such in any future development plans within the PUD when specific project design plans are submitted to city staff for approval. Conservation easement. One of the major concerns that we heard from the community last year was that our PUD request was simply a case of the camel's nose coming under the tent, that the proposal was simply the beginning of a process to sell the entire university farm. This is simply not true, and we have decided that the best way to formalize our commitment is to seek the placement of a conservation easement, an easement in perpetuity on the remaining 812 acres of the farm. We have already commenced discussions with several public and private parties who help sponsor and fund such easements. It's important to emphasize that the purpose of such an easement is to ensure 812 acres of main station farmland remains in its current use for teaching, research, and outreach. We are not selling the farm. In closing, UNR is proud to be one of the few major economic engines to help northern Nevada in terms of economic development. It's a responsibility that we take very seriously. At the same time, we also realize the game has changed for us as well, especially when it comes to state financial support. We accept the challenge from the governor, the legislature, and from our own Board of Regents to do more on our own, to find resources, to reinvest, to continue to grow UNR for the benefit of our entire community. While the challenge to date has involved our budget, where we've experienced a 30% reduction in state funding since 2008, another part of that challenge means ensuring we are good stewards of the resources that we already have. This request for the university center PUD falls into the second category. I'm out of time, but I only have two more sentences if I might. The university has no plans to sell or develop this parcel. However, as stewards of UNR assets, we need to preserve the potential value of those 104 acres of property fronting the soon-to-be six-lane major freeway by entitling it now. We believe that this is both the opportunity and the obligation that we have to best help UNR and the communities that we serve here in northern Nevada. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. For the city, Nathan?
Good evening, Commissioners. Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. As your staff memo outlines, this item is being returned to the commission due to a noticing error. When you first, when the commission first heard this case, it was referenced as a request going from large lot residential, one acre, to a PUD. Further analysis has revealed that that is not the case. There's currently no zoning on the parcel. The last zoning was a county zoning of general rural. That's why this item is before the commission this evening, specifically for that, to address that concern. There's no substantial difference to what the commission previously recommended approval for, other than clarifying that the noticing designation is in fact, this is a new designation request to PUD. The city council has postponed this item twice to allow the university a greater opportunity to coordinate with the concerned stakeholders on various issues of concern. They've held numerous outreach meetings during this time, as outlined in your staff memo. One thing I would like to address from the, from the presentation there, that any, any request to exceed the one-to-one mitigation that's specified in code or in the PUD, the Planning Commission would need to make that recommendation to the city council. The PUD as proposed currently does not require any, anything beyond the one-to-one mitigation, so I did want to clarify that. Staff concurs with the applicant's presentation and can make the applicable findings. I'll be available for any questions that you may have regarding planning issues. Bill Gall, Senior Civil Engineer, will be available for any questions you have regarding engineering concerns.
Thank you, Nathan. This is a public hearing. We have several requests to speak. If you wish to speak, you will get three minutes. Please fill out one of these forms at the clerk's desk. If you do not wish to speak, but you are in favor or opposed, you can also fill one out. We will read your name into the record. First to speak, Wendy Burley. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Members of the Planning Commission. It's nice to see you all again, I guess. You know, when we were sent back to co and have a discussion with President Johnson and the administration, what we were sent back to do is to come up with a good solution for the 104 acres, not for the remaining 812 acres minus the 165 acres for the proposed sale for RTC. So, it's a little bit disingenuous to say, oh, we're going to throw you a bone and say, you know, we really went back and we had all these big discussions minus the 104 acres. That's not why we're here. And I am, I am, I have, I have two questions, just for clarity. If, in fact, this zoning passes, does the city allow any agricultural activities with the new zoning?
We, this is a public hearing. You have your three minutes. We will get those questions asked at the proper time.
This isn't the proper time to understand that zoning?
No, this is not. You have three minutes right now.
All right, and I would like to enter into the record that there is a piece of all of this discussion that we haven't had, and that is that we have received formula funds on the main station farm. Those funds, both Hatch Act funds and other funds, are part of federal mandated law, and one of those federal mandated laws is that when there is a major change to agricultural experimental station land, that there needs to be certain practices in place, and one of those, and I have the, the federal law governing this, is in fact Title VII requires an environmental assessment. an environmental assessment. I don't believe that there's one included with this PUD. And in fact, the law says that it must be done before they even proceed to having anything done on agricultural experimental station land. I'm sure there's some clarity that needs to happen with this, and I'd just like to enter into the record that that has not been done. There has been no environmental assessment, and we haven't even had this discussion, and we're already at talking about a PUD, about development, that's supposedly not even going to happen. So that's my statement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jana Vanderhal.
Good evening.
You have three minutes.
My name is Jana Vanderhal. I'm a local landscape architect, and I'm representing the community, the local food community. I wanted to put down this picture of the area of Wolfpack meat and the area in question. Over here is Wolfpack meat. And this is the 1997 flood. We heard a lot of positive things about this proposal that make it seem that it's okay to develop this land, but none of this, none of the flood project's mitigation for the floodlands there has happened yet to prevent any of such flooding to occur on this particular site. Mr. Johnson starts his speeches often with that he has a background in farming and that he was actually a dean of agriculture, and that he is a proponent for agriculture. And so I would like him to preserve this land for agriculture, what it was set aside for. In fact, he encouraged us to come up with a plan for that land. We had a lot of stakeholders working together to create a plan for this, the Main Station Farm, that includes the 100 acres there because it's the best soil out there for growing food, for doing specialty crop research, for having a master gardener's demonstration garden, which we currently don't have anymore, cooperative extensions there to connect agricultural research with the community. We've worked on a plan for the corner parcel there next to Wolfpack meats to do a demonstration garden, which the city currently does not have. And it would be great, I'm a professional here in town, it would be great to bring some great parkland demonstration, research, and farming education back into Reno and back into UNR. It's missing in this community, in the whole nation. Local food is in the upright. People want to eat healthy foods. They want to know they're farmers. There's young farmers going back into farming that have no background in farming because they grew up in the city. Our average farmer is 58 years old, and there was a recent report on our preparedness as the city of Reno for emergencies, and one of those parts would be to have a local food security. And right now, we're very much lacking in that. If there's a big storm like we had last week, and if there's no passage, we will have enough food on our store shelves for three days. But if we look more into the city's plans to integrate more local food, parkland, and do a new plan that includes farmland that can flood, farmland can flood, it's not a, you know, farmers don't mind the siltation from the rivers ending up on the farmland. We think that's a better solution for this parcel than having it built into more warehouses that will have for lease signs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeff Bryant. You have three minutes.
So I'm here as both a representative of local food community, but also a homeowner just up the street from the Field Lab. I have great concerns about the floodplain and it being developed. I am not quite convinced that my home will be safe. This is a picture again of the 97 flood. You can see McCarron in the foreground and Pembroke. My house, luckily in the 97 flood, we barely missed out on the floodwaters. And the neighborhood that I'm in, it wasn't, none of the houses that were designed to deal with floods or open to floods, we don't currently have to have flood insurance. One of my great concerns as a homeowner is that I'm going to have to purchase flood insurance on my home if the Main Station Field Labs begins to develop, when we lose our natural floodplain. It's a great cost, especially because my home does not fit current requirements. I got a quote from my insurer. If it were to be moved in the floodplain, it would cost me in excess of $2,000 a year as a homeowner, which is just not appropriate. On the other side, so we need to preserve our open spaces here in the community. The food security is a major issue, and the plans that Kabiner has put forth and has been working on as an alternative to development at the Main Station Field Lab, something that should be heard. I don't know how genuine the university is in saying that they reached out to local stakeholders and addressed their concerns. From what I understand, they're putting forth pretty much exactly the same plan for the 104 acres that created such an outcry in the community last year. They've held meetings with local stakeholders and interest groups, but they haven't really addressed many concerns. I think that shows, just reflects very poorly on the university and their interest in supporting the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Busselman. You have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Doug Busselman. I'm the Executive Vice President of the Nevada Farm Bureau, a statewide organization. We are opposed to the conversion of the zoning for this property. We believe that the Main Station Farm should be kept in agricultural use and maintained for agricultural research. We are convinced that as a result of this zoning change proposal, we will see another example of a loss of the agricultural research that has been taking place over the past several years. From our perspective, this property is linked to a public mission of our land-grant university. We do not believe that the zoning change proposed fits in the context of the public purpose for that property. As a public entity, UNR is supposed to be an educational research organization, not a property owner with the same options and profit orientation that should be available for a private property owner. We believe public funds, including federal research dollars, have been invested in this property to be used for agricultural research that are consistent with the purpose for the property. Converting this property for commercial use is a violation, in our opinion, for the public trust associated with this property. If we are to accept the idea that the remaining 812 acres will be retained in agricultural use, through your actions, you will be establishing an urban agricultural interface that might become a point of contention in the future, especially as you're going to continue to use animal agriculture interacting with some of the commercial uses that might be associated with the development that's being envisioned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ann Bolinger.
Good evening. On one side of the story this evening, you have the applicant, the paid consultants and attorneys, spending considerable amount of time and money on this project towards a single goal and objective. On the other hand, you have informed residents with a larger, community-wide vision, concerned with various impacts, and individually with little to nothing to gain. In the letter in your packet this evening from the attorney and the arguments for PUD, one of the items I'd like to remind you is, in the planning code, a PUD allows the flexibility in development of the land to promote the most appropriate and compatible uses, and that's their argument. But in addition to that, the definition continues and preserves the natural and scenic features in the community. Additionally, other city of Reno plans, you have the Land Use Plan. In a special planning area, it states, "allows any individual land use or land uses in combination which are compatible and complementary within the project boundaries and with adjoining properties." On the first map this evening, you saw that this property adjoins with the remainder of the UNR farm. The comment about the Open Space and Greenways Plan, I personally participated in those meetings, and most of the UNR farm is not within the city of Reno jurisdiction, so therefore that's one reason it is not in the plan, or naively, perhaps, I thought it was protected by the university. However, in the Open Space and Greenways Plan, there is a paragraph that talks about the agricultural and pasture lands in the community, and specifically refers to the university farm and associated wetlands, and how they can protect groundwater recharge and floodplain functions. Additionally, the Conservation Plan, it states, "The city should strive to preserve the scenic, natural, public safety, and recreation values of sensitive lands by constraining development on designated water bodies, AE flood zones, etc." As you also heard, this is an AE flood zone. FEMA has a requirement that mandatory flood insurance purchase will be required on this property. Additionally, I would just like to give you the visual. If you put a brick in a glass of water, that water level will increase for all the adjacent landowners and the residents in the area. The city of Reno, if you protect this property one way or another through conservation easements, you can probably work with your floodplain manager, work towards credits, and thereby reducing the flood insurance rates for your other residents. Carson City and Douglas County have gone through impressive measures through their open space acquisitions and conservation easements to protect their floodplain areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Woodkey. Welcome back. You have three minutes.
My name is Jim Woodkey, and I live just out of the university property here and on Corner Pembroke and McCarron. And my main issue on this here is the floodplain, but I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask, too. Is in the event, if you people approve this land to develop it, does that mean that the property that the city has spent over $15 million that I know of on Mill Street there, the Ferrari Farms and down through there, does that mean, this is in the same floodplain, it's just rock throwing distance across the street, does that mean that now that property will be legal and elable? I mean, in other words, some company comes in here with the money and the stuff to do it, can sue the city of Reno, say, well, I want to develop that land, and they can develop it? Because when the airport authority right across the street from us come in there and condemned all that land in there years ago, and friends of ours had to move their houses out and get out of there and everything else, well, after a length of time, I think somebody says it's a legal length of time of X years, then they can do what they want to do with it? Well, that's what they did with it. FedEx is in there now, and this was to protect the airplanes, the people, and stuff like that. Well, they come in here, oh, no, we decided not now. So there's a plumbing contractor, the parts house down there, and FedEx took all that land that the city of Reno, I guess, decided they didn't need it anymore. So is that basically what's going to happen here? We'll do this. The contractor comes in there, he fills in five feet of water, he builds the warehouses in there, he rents it out to you. The flood comes in, you get flooded. Does he care? No. Because he's rented out to you. That's your responsibility. If you don't like to get flooded, don't rent the property. But he's going to make money because he built the warehouses, he's up in Hawaii in his nice place, or in Europe and visiting the country, because they don't live here. No respect for these people here. But they have nothing to gain or lose by it. I have something to gain or lose by it because I live there. And it's no fun. If you've never experienced a flood, next time there's a flood like we had here a couple weeks ago, come out to my house if you want to sit there with me and the wife. We're up in our ages now, and we cannot get sandbags like we used to do years ago. So all we can do is sit there and say, come and flood. And if any of these people would like to come out there and sit with us to see what we're going through, there'd be my invite. But I don't think any of them live in that neighborhood, and to be honest with you, not trying to be rude or sarcastic, I don't think that they really care, because they're in here to sell you people this project and get you to buy this project so that they can get, or somebody in there to build these warehouses in there, make more money, 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 money. But nobody comes around and talks to us people, say, well, here, let us raise your house up, or what can we do? You're 70, 80 years old, and I'm 79. What can we do to help you protect your property? Nobody has ever come and offered me that, but they're offering you every suggestion. Well, we've done our soil test, we've done our water test, we've done this test and this test, but they've never tested us people that live there. And it'd be appreciated, me sometimes, they attest us sometime. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Jesse Walano? I can't read this. On Marsh Street, Marsh Avenue?
I live on Marsh, and I'm in opposition to this. I think that it sets a dangerous precedent for the college to be selling off its land trust. And, you know, who is to say if this hundred, some acres is sold, that the rest won't follow after that? I think that Jana's been working, and Jeff, who already spoke, has been working with Kabiner, to develop an alternative plan, and specifically looking at that 100 acres that's right by McCarron. If that is the best soil, certainly don't you think that UNR and the city should make an investment in the land and in its students instead of selling it off to warehouses? I think that if you want the students at UNR to learn what a land trust is and to learn how to actually use the land, this is an opportunity to be able to learn how to farm. And I think in the coming weeks, in the coming months, if you look at that plan, I think it's a much better alternative, and that's why I say.
Thank you. Megan Mattson, please. Are you busy? Was that Megan that just left? You have three minutes.
I didn't want to make a comment. I just wanted to say that I was in opposition to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Blaine Pickett. You have three minutes.
I'm in opposition. Thank you.
Short and sweet. Mary Jane Nobleheart. No, I'm not sure if you want to read this into the record. Is that, okay. You have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening. Reno City Planning Commission, the UNR and government officials, UNR students, concerned citizens, and the stakeholders regarding the rezoning of the 104 acres of the UNR Main Station Field Lab annexed to the city of Reno from Washoe County in just October 2011. I'm Mary Jane Nobleheart. My background and experience in engineering and construction permits me to address my comments tonight to crucial concerns regarding a 60-inch diameter sewer interceptor that runs directly under Mill Street across the land proposed for rezoning and future development. And on the map, this comes down Mill Street here, goes across the 104 acres and continues out to the reclamation facility. So 60 inches in diameter is actually an interceptor that's five feet across. And for those who may not know, this interceptor is a major sewer line that receives and controls sewage flows from multiple trunks feeding into it from throughout the city and runs directly to the reclamation facility east of the intersection of Steamboat Creek and the Truckee River. And according to state and local planning codes and ordinances, building construction is illegal over any sewage interceptor. This allows uncomplicated access in the case of any emergency situation. Although the proposed multi-use rezoning application states that the proposed commercial and residential uses would generate an estimated 780,988 gallons per day, nowhere in the maps and documents submitted with the application gallons per day, nowhere in the maps and documents submitted with the application has Wood Rogers disclosed this major interceptor or provided additional studies. These would be especially important since the development is located in a floodplain so close to the Truckee River on an old system that could possibly collapse from additional weight of the building or the construction's own activity. Additionally, the wetlands that could be affected nearby must be considered. This summer, with the connection of three additional buildings from UNR, peak sewage flows have already substantially increased. You may remember the construction on Virginia Street and Evans Street enlarging the sewage lines to accommodate these buildings that tie into the interceptor downtown at Mill Street. A three-hundred-and-twenty-bed residence hall and two classroom buildings have significantly added to the capacity of the sewage interceptor under Mill Street that crosses through the land proposed for rezoning and future development a few miles away from downtown at East McCarran Boulevard. This would minimally require additional studies to determine the effects the added loads would create to the existing capacities of the system on its way to the wastewater treatment facility that's in partnership with the UNR main station field lab for its irrigation water. I urge you to add these facts to just one more reason for your recommendations to the council members of the city of Reno to deny this application and maintain the integrity of the property as agricultural land. Thank you.
Thank you. I have several requests to speak or comment forms. These are people that did not wish to make a statement but are in opposition. For the record, Haley Anderson Fulmer, Mike Tegless, Bonnie Trejo, Neil Bertrando, I hope I said that right, John Toth, Kevin, or Karen, Karen Watke. Okay. This is a public hearing, this is your last opportunity to speak. If you wish to speak, now is your last chance. And I see we have some takers. You can come up and speak and fill it out when you're done, in the interest of time. Come on. Come on up. Don't be shy. Come on. Do you not wish to speak? And they did not. Amber Solidberry is in opposition. Amber, is that? Okay. Elias Deschardt in opposition, did not wish to speak. And Robin Deschardt, same last name, did not wish to speak. Once again, last chance. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Hearing and seeing no one approaching, I see one more orange piece of paper. Laurie Leonard in opposition, does not wish to make a statement. Okay, one last chance. Anyone else? Giving everyone a fair shot. Hearing and seeing none, I'm closing that part of the public hearing, and I'm going to bring it back to the commissioner for questions. And Commissioner Wiskey, I think I'll start on your side, and maybe we can keep this to two or three questions each, move around, and I'll come back a second try. How's that sound?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nathan, let's start with you, if we could. The applicant represented that the new proposed uses are compatible with adjoining existing Would you please explain what the current zoning is for this property in the city of Reno? Because it was, from what I understand, due to in my packet, that it was not in the city of Reno before, it was in Washoe County, and it may or may not have come over with an agricultural use. Would you please expand upon that?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. The site currently does not have a zoning designation. The previous zoning designation was from Washoe County, it was a general rural designation. The site was annexed last year. Adjacent zoning designations are largely industrial or consistent with what they're proposing. Essentially, the PUD adds or transcends the zoning on the west side of McCarran to this subject site.
And if I can expand on that, Claudia Hansen, Planning Engineering Manager. The last adopted zoning, being the county zoning, would still be in place, it was never removed, so we're switching from that to this zoning designation.
Okay. So Nathan, then, with the proposed PUD that's been brought before us, does it, it allows on this hundred and four acres to continue as ag until such a project is brought forward and presented? Because right now, there is no project being brought forward, correct?
They're requesting entitlements to develop. And so by if, should the council adopt the PUD, that would entitle them to the development specified within the PUD, until such time that a building permit was pulled to actually develop and utilize those entitlements. It would be an existing nonconforming use which could continue in perpetuity until such time that they utilize the entitlement.
Okay. In the case of Wolfpack Meats, if they, if the university or Wolfpack Meats chose to make improvements to that facility, and the adjoining property was not properly zoned, wouldn't that create a problem for making the improvements to the existing?
I'm not sure I understand that question, Commissioner.
Well, in other words, you have to have a compatible use, correct?
Are you talking about land use compatibility with Wolfpack Meats?
Yes.
The state law has a right to farm ordinance. Because Wolfpack Meat is in existence, any agricultural uses surrounding the proposed development would be allowed to continue operating.
Okay. So they can continue operating, including as a meat processing facility?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Bill, I have a question for you, please.
Could I? Mr. Chairman, could I piggyback on that for just a second?
Go ahead.
Wolfpack Meats is under the county, not the city.
That's correct.
So we don't have really regulations as far as if they would want to improve that or whatever.
They are in our sphere of influence, so if they chose to expand, it would be under our building permit authority.
But still under the county.
Still under the county.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wiskey?
Bill? The photo that's up on the screen right now
Yes.
was represented to us as being the flood of ninety-seven. And my question is to you, and it's similar to the question that was raised a month or so ago, I think it was maybe November, when we were talking about a proposed development on facing McCarran. This photo shows the ranch underwater. And did the ranch cause this flood?
For the record, Bilgal, Senior Civil Engineer, the ranch did not cause this flood.
What's the, the cause of the flood is a backup of the Truckee River, correct?
The flood, this flood, a large flood event, all rain events, we've got upstream flows that come down, ultimately, everything discharges in the Truckee Meadows into the Truckee River. On a very, very large flood event, the Truckee River elevation rises, preventing the flows from Steamboat Creek, the flows from UNR Farms west in that area, from reaching the Truckee River. And eventually, those back up, and those flows to the Steamboat Creek will overtop Steamboat and back, and flood back towards McCarran to the west for those areas until such time that the, you know, the Truckee is able to drain, and the flood elevations drop within the Truckee, and then those flows will come back out of these areas and flow back into the Truckee.
Okay. So what we propose to do now that's different at this time is flood mitigation on a one-to-one ratio.
That is correct.
Would you describe how that would work on this property?
Basically, on this property, what our code requires is that in some portion of this land and development, they will raise the elevation, the ground elevation up above the flood elevation of the nineteen-ninety-seven flood. And for that, the material that they raise, that they bring in to raise those elevations to provide for their development, they will then have to remove that same volume of material below the nineteen-ninety-seven flood elevation somewhere else on their site, in an equal ratio of one-to-one. So if they bring in a hundred thousand yards of fill to raise it above the ninety-seven, they'll have to remove a hundred thousand yards of material within that same elevation band.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Stapleton?
I have a, I'll start with another question about flooding for Bill. So we're looking at the ninety-seven flood, correct?
Correct.
And the level, the highest level of the ninety-seven flood, is that the elevation at which they're doing the one foot above, that they're required to place the fill, so it's one foot above that?
In this case, in our code requirements, what they're required to do is raise any structures one foot above the hundred-year flood elevation in a flood zone. What they proposed in their PUD, and what they've agreed to, is to raise their structures one foot above this nineteen-ninety-seven flood elevation, which is equal to what we consider a hundred-and-seventeen-year flood. It's about one and a half feet above what the one-hundred-year flood elevation is for this area. So in this case, like I said, they're raising an additional one and a half feet, and they're also mitigating for any fill up to that ninety, nineteen-ninety-seven flood elevation.
Okay, so the elevation of this project would be above these floodwaters?
It would be.
When it was built?
Approximately one foot, minimum elevation would be one foot above those floodwaters.
Okay. And then in terms of how the one-to-one mitigation works, is it excavation? And I'm asking this because the project that we reviewed in December that Commissioner Wiskey, I'm sorry, November, that Commissioner Wiskey mentioned, something came up where they were going to excavate to a certain level in order to offset what they were building, but the water table was above the excavation. So that's just a question I feel obligated to ask now when projects come forward in the floodplain. So where is the, if there are mitigation pools or, you know, excavation, where's that going to happen? And is the lowest level of retention above the water table? And then I guess, and then I guess what that led into last time was, during a flood, the water table's at ground level, so anyway.
I'm going to answer, in general conditions for this case, they have some models proposed. They don't have a specific plan that shows their exact excavation areas, or their specific numbers of exactly how much fill material they're going to need to raise those elevations. They're general in that respect. They have a lot of land available to them to the east that they could use to provide that mitigation and that excavation. All of that excavation has to be in an area that wouldn't contain, wouldn't hit groundwater at the elevations, and also would be able to drain eventually, wouldn't be a pond prior to the flood event.
So is that, is that a requirement in the flood mitigation, that when you're doing any retention, that that's looked at? Is that in the model?
It's, it's a requirement as part of our code.
The requirement for the mitigation, but in terms of the retention in relation, retention ponds in relation to the groundwater, is that part of that requirement? Is that something you guys look at? Because the project that was before us in November, it was not, and so it sort of, you know, erased a little bit of that mitigation.
Well, it, I'm going to have to go back to the other project, it really, it didn't. I mean, there was, there were some areas that were cored previously that had a high groundwater table shown. Those areas, we weren't, they weren't proposing to excavate down to that groundwater elevation. So they were still, the area of excavation that was still above that groundwater point at that point as well. They weren't hitting groundwater. If they do, it doesn't, it doesn't count for us.
Okay, that's my question. I guess they said they couldn't do additional mitigation, right? We had asked about that because of that. So that is in the requirements for the mitigation, that you have to account for the level of the groundwater?
That's part of our code, yeah.
Okay. And then I had a question about, I don't know if the other commissioners remember, the last time we heard this, we put, I guess it's within our purview to request modifications to the PUD, and the last time this was heard, there were a few modifications that the commissioners discussed, and there were a couple that were voted forward when it was approved by the commission. I'm not sure that additional flood mitigation was one of those. I'd like to have a discussion maybe about asking for a little additional flood mitigation because of, you know, the concerns of the surrounding residents. And then there were a few other things that were discussed, and I don't know if they're included in the current proposal, and if so, I just wanted to make sure we talked about those and maybe try to include those again. Yeah, so I guess, Melissa, sorry. Thanks, Bill. So I guess it was, well, maybe we should put additional, you know, mitigation to the side and talk about, that's something I'm concerned about, so I don't know if any of the other commissioners, it's something we did talk about last time, so, and I know it is not in the current proposal, so that's one I would like to talk about. But in terms of the ones specifically that were proposed last time, I think it was buffers, disclosures for future, for surrounding, for future tenants if the PUD goes forward, as well as, right, the elevation to the flood level, which it looks like is in there, to the ninety-seven flood level.
Thank you. I believe in my presentation, I addressed the buffer that was added between Wolfpack Meats and the PUD property, and that was thirty feet, I believe. We also indicated that disclosures would be provided to any future tenants or owners, disclosing the fact that Wolfpack Meats is there and discussing the operations in detail. And in terms of the mitigation, we did say that we would do better than one-to-one on the flood mitigation.
So my question is, since this is coming back to us, are any of those actually in the, were any of those added into the PUD, or was it just assumed that we would do the same as last time and add them as modifications if the commission wanted to do that again?
We agreed that those modifications would be acceptable, and we would add them to any future document.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And, and just to clarify things about, about the groundwater, we did do groundwater testing, and Mickey Smith did that in our, in our office, and groundwater is well below the amount of the area that we'd be excavating. So we're in good shape with groundwater. If you have specific questions, we could discuss that further.
I guess not knowing where the retention would be, it's hard to, I guess I just wanted that assurance, that that's part of the calculus in the mitigation. And I did remember one more, I think, modification that we had discussed, the northern portion of the site, having it more industrial.
Yes.
Do you remember that?
Yes, I do.
The commissioners, remember what I'm talking about? That there was an issue with compatibility, and so we looked at adding a modification to...
We're still in questions, not in discussion.
Okay. So that was my question. Is that an additional modification?
Yes, we talked, we talked about that, we agreed to that last time.
Okay. So maybe that's something that we could discuss when we're done with questions. I have one more question for Claudia. And this is something that we talked about last time, and I just wanted to do this again and ask, in terms of the use that's adjacent to this property, it's meatpacking, so slaughterhouse meatpacking, in the city of Reno, what zone is that an allowed use in, and what type of criteria is there for adjacent surrounding uses?
Claudia Hansen, Planning Engineering Manager. I believe it was industrial with a special use permit, and I don't understand your question on what the conditions would be for surrounding uses.
So I think we discussed that it was heavy industrial, and if that's an allowed use in Reno city limits, that it comes with certain requirements for adjacent properties. I think that there had to be a buffer of other industrial properties around that. I think we went back and looked at that in the code. And I don't know if we could do that again, just to add?
I can, I can look it up, unless Nathan knows offhand.
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Slaughterhouse is an allowed use with the special use permit in the industrial zone. There are no specifications regarding, you know, the adjacent zoning or anything to that effect. It's an allowed use with the special use permit, that's under the purview. The appropriateness is under the purview of the Planning Commission.
The discussion may have been that through the special use permit, you could require... The discussion may have been that through the special use permit, you could require the, a new slaughterhouse to provide a buffer. That would be something you could bring forward in a special use permit.
I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, compatibility with surrounding uses. So if we were looking at a, you know, slaughterhouse in an industrial zoning, you know, what would the criteria be for looking at adjacent uses, you know, residential, office, if there's any criteria like that, or if that would just be, you know, up to the planning commission to decide if it's compatible?
We'd have to look at it case-by-case basis, sorry.
That would be part, yeah, that would be part of the discretionary decision.
Okay.
That's, that's what the special use permit's for, and I believe, my recollection of the discussion that you brought up by, by moving the more industrial types of uses, the industri, you know, it's industrial, commercial, industrial business is a transition from the slaughterhouse, which should be allowed in an industrial zone.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Kaufman? You have questions?
This would be for the applicant. One of the people that got up and spoke talked about environmental assessment on that property and having to do with funding. Has the university looked at that, or?
I believe so, and I'd like to call up Mary Dugan, Counsel for the University.
Good evening. I'm Mary Dugan, General Counsel for the University of Nevada Reno. There is no evidence that any Hatch Act funds were used to purchase the main station farm, and we believe that any reference to a required environmental assessment does not apply to this property as a result. The National Institute for Food and Agriculture is the body that determines whether an environmental assessment is required, and there's been no determination of that sort made. We don't believe there is any reason to believe that an environmental assessment is required.
Thank you.
Is that all?
That's really all the question.
Okay. Commissioner Logue?
I have a question, and I'm not sure who can answer this, but I obviously have a question that someone brought up about the major sewage interceptor. So can you explain a little bit about that and tell everybody how serious that is?
Sure. For the record, Bill Gahl, Senior Engineer. There's a city of Reno, 16-inch sewer interceptor runs down Mill Street and then runs across this property on the northern portion of it, and goes out to the Tomworth facility. We have an existing easement for the sewer interceptor that has to be maintained for any development. As she's mentioned, structures, any development over the top of that short of roadway type or parking facilities would not be allowed within that sewer easement. And the existing easement is there, they would have to maintain that. If they propose to do any, any development as it comes in, and they would get in the area of that sewer interceptor, they would be forced at that point to relocate it on their, at their cost as necessary. Regarding capacity, you know, our code requires that the developer come in and provide studies to take their flows from where they are to, to city facilities and to the nearest interceptor. In this case, this will connect directly to the interceptor, so they have to design their, their system, their sewer system, and provide, you know, design and construction to get it to the interceptor, which is on their site. From that point, the city takes, you know, takes responsibility for capacity and development of, of the sewer interceptors and any upsizing that needs to be required at that point. This was reviewed by our Public Works Department. They had no concern regarding capacity within their interceptor that close to, to Tomworth.
Commissioner Woosley?
Question for the applicant representative. I know you've mentioned it several times, but the, the environmental easement, does that go including the northern portion of the boundary? Or can you explain exactly where?
The conservation easement that, that UNR's working on? Ron, maybe you can come up and, and talk a little bit more about what you've been thinking, and it, and it is over the 812-acre area.
That, in fact, is the answer, for the record, Ron. The area in, I guess it's yellow up there, the entire 812 acres is what we're talking about for the conservation easement. And again, we've already engaged in some conversations with some public and private entities to try to secure both their sponsorship and secure funding to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Question for Bill. One thing I just want to make clear to myself and then maybe others in the audience is, true one-to-one mitigation means that there should not be any further impact to the surrounding areas. It would absorb as much as it would if it was untouched. And is that correct?
That is correct.
So there, with that reasoning, that should not change any kind of flood boundaries for insurance reasons or FEMA flood boundaries, or what would be designated?
That is, that is correct. It won't make any changes to, to the flood designations or flood, flood boundaries at all.
When, when the study is gone in and the one-to-one is, is approved off, then, then, say, the Truckee Meadows Regional Flood Program, I mean, they would sign off saying, agreeing that that would, they agree that that has not had impact to their?
Actually, I mean, the, the flood project has review and comment authority over our, our projects in this respect. And right now, what they push to us and what we've done is, is include our one-to-one mitigation in our code that we've, we've done within our, within the flood zone. So with this project, as with the previous project, what they want to see is that this project comes in and complies fully with the code that they have, that they have worked with us to put in place for the city. As long as these projects come in and fully comply with the code that we have in place, they're comfortable with the development as proposed.
Thank you very much.
That's it. Kevin, round two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was one question, and Nathan, I, I believe you had addressed it, but not directly. And that was when we were discussing the appropriate land uses of what the existing meatpacking plant sits on and what this 104 acres is. And specifically for this 104 acres, this PUD is approved, does it allow for ag development if it's not developed into something else?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Again, this would be an existing non-conforming use. If the PUD were approved, it would be approved for the development specified within the PUD. Until that time, agriculture could continue to operate on the site.
Okay. And state farming laws that you discussed earlier, that also would, would apply here so that?
Specifically, NRS 40.140 is the right, Nevada's Right to Farm law.
Okay.
That would allow that to, to continue.
Okay. Thank you very much. Melissa, I have a question for you, please, applicants representative. We saw a diagram from a local architect who did a representation of what she felt would be an appropriate use of this property. Is, is there an organization or a group behind this proposed use that's met with UNR that has asked to lease the property or buy the property and do this development, similar to what UNR is trying to do with this property that you're aware of?
I am not sure. I'm gonna...
Is there anybody here from UNR that can answer to that?
Ask to UNR. Okay. No, nobody has approached UNR to buy the property or develop it independently of UNR. UNR's property is, is educational-based, and, and that's what they intend to use, the 812 acres, and, and dedicate that to, to save, to be saved for that type of use. And then with regard to the ag development?
Yeah.
Do you want me to answer that question? Ag development, does the PUD allow for it? It doesn't address it, but we could certainly allow it, add it as an allowed use.
Well, I think we have state law that takes care of that for us. Unless Marilyn would like to chime in on that, I will trust state law to supersede. Marilyn?
I think clarity is always helpful. If there's any question, put it in the PUD so that it's understood by everybody. So it makes it clear.
Thank you. Then commissioners, we may want to consider adding that to this. Thank you, Melissa, for that. Mr. Chairman, no further questions at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiskey. Commissioner Stapleton?
I just want to follow up with Commissioner Wiskey's question. It looks like that the, that UNR didn't have an answer, but there was someone from the audience that knew about a proposal. So if it's all right, Mr. Chair, can we ask that person to come up and?
And the question is, have they offered to purchase?
Were there any proposal, alternate proposals for use of the land? That was the question?
It's your question.
Oh, it was your question. You asked if there was any alternate proposals for the use of the land. Okay, so you're satisfied with that?
And I received an answer from UNR, yes.
Okay. And the answer was, they don't know. So I would like to ask the audience member if there's other information out there, so. The answer was no. The answer from UNR was no. Okay. All right. Okay. Well, I, I, there's people in the back of the room saying that, so I would like to ask them to come up and, and shed some light on that. Am I allowed to do that? Can I ask a question of an audience member?
I would say go ahead and ask the question, but if they haven't proposed anything to UNR, and UNR has no offers on it, I think that answers the question, but go ahead and come on up and answer. Come on. You had your hand up. You have something that...
Hi, my name is...
And this is regard, this isn't just a dream thing.
My name is Wendy Baroli, and I represent the stakeholders invited by UNR to participate in this process, and we were asked for a proposal. That 104-acre diagram was a year's worth of work, asked by UNR when we were directed by city council to go back and meet, to come up with a plan. And not only did we work as stakeholders, but there was federal officials, there were state agency officials, there were university officials, and there were members of the public.
The question was lease or purchase?
I don't think he actually specifically said just lease or purchase. He asked for other proposals.
No, I did ask for lease or purchase.
Okay.
Who brought a business proposal together to lease or purchase that land and develop it in that manner?
It was a business plan that we were asked to put together through, through the university. I mean, we were asked to come up with a business, a viable business plan that could be executed by the university through research and development on that 104 acres.
I'll take responsibility for asking that question. I, I'm fine. I don't have any other questions.
Commissioner Woosley, any further questions? Commissioner Kaufman?
No.
Commissioner Logue?
No.
Okay. I, I have one, Bill. I believe at the last, last meeting, I haven't asked any questions, so I'm going to be very brief. The last meeting, the one-to-one ratio, the compliance with what was required, I believe that is what was decided upon or what went through on that vote. Now, in the interim, UNR has agreed to increase that mitigation ratio to better than one-to-one?
For the record, Bill Gahl, I, prior to, right now, I, and tonight, I didn't hear that they had required to put anything in the PUD to specifically tie them down to something beyond one-to-one.
But would that be in the PUD, the description of the PUD, or would that be something that we add as a condition to have the mitigation greater than one-to-one?
If you simply say greater than one-to-one, you know, they can give us an extra teaspoon, and that's greater than one-to-one. If you want to specifically specify a number, you could ask them if they want to specify a number greater than one-to-one.
Well, isn't better than one-to-one better than one-to-one?
Better than one-to-one is better than one-to-one, absolutely.
So what, what you would be saying is, what you saw in the flooding of 97, the picture that we've seen for the last 15 years or however, the flooding would actually be less because the mitigation on that site would be better than one-to-one?
The flooding, it would be negligible because of the, you know, sheer volume we're looking at.
I understand.
For the flood areas. But it would be better.
Some peoples...
You would have, you would have larger flood storage.
Okay. So it would be better.
Yes.
And also, the 48 acres is the first time I've heard about this on Valley Road. Is that part of the, the agreement that we're coming to today, that they're going to provide the 48 acres and the hoop houses on Valley Road?
I'm not aware of anything.
Or was that? Yeah.
For the record, Ron, sorry. No, sir, it does not include that. We were just indicating that those are just land assets that are available to carry out the mission of agriculture.
Okay. So that's something that's available for the ag community and the growers?
That's correct. It was for information only.
Okay. And that's really all I have. The rest of the commissioners have asked the questions. So with that, we'll stop the questions, bring it back to the board for comments, and we'll start with whoever wants to start. Commissioner Stapleton?
I'll start, since you called on me. And I did, I guess I wanted to discuss with the other commissioners if there was any interest in continuing, or in also offering the same, or asking for the same modifications that we did last time. And I think that those were increased buffer, which I think Melissa already said was part of the proposal, that the northern portion of the site be zoned industrial so that it would be more, or be, not zoned, but designated for industrial, so that it would be more compatible to that use to the north. Noticing for future tenants, and... Oh, that was all?
Noticing regarding the, the, the UNR meets?
Yeah. And then increased mitigation.
I have a comment on increased mitigation.
Commissioner Logue?
I would just like to know, one-to-one. I mean, it seems like one-to-one in that area, I mean, I, I went out there. I'm not sure if more than one-to-one is necessary, frankly. I mean, is, are we doing that because that's going to make people feel better, or is it in a reality, we really need more than one-to-one? Do we, does, do we really need more than one-to-one?
This, I think a lot, there's a lot of people that could weigh in on this, and it's a whole separate discussion. I think that a lot of folks felt when that one-to-one that was passed, that it was not sufficient to, to protect surrounding properties, and that further mitigation was required. I'm not an expert on that, so I don't know. I know Dennis was involved with that probably a couple years back, so I can't speak to that, so.
I just hate to make, make a lot more work and a lot, for people to spend a lot more money, when in reality, what are the effects of above one-to-one? Because if, you know, if that's really going to help, then I say yes, for sure. But I don't think we should do it just for show.
Yeah. I think it's not for show, but I personally can't make that argument, so if there's no one that can, you know, you're probably right, so.
Well, I, I think the mindset that went into that on the previous project, and the reason we're discussing it today is, we're trying to make it actually better for the residents in that area, and particularly to the south of that property. I've heard story after story after story, in the last seven and a half years that I've been here, that the flood of 97, it came within three inches of flooding into my, into my home. And I, my feeling is, one-to-one makes it no better, it certainly makes it no worse. But if you go slightly better than one-to-one, and you're doing that progressively in that area, I think it does have a benefit to the residents, particularly to the south, the Heron's Landing area, and even on the corner of Pembroke. So I, I don't think it's, it's a fluff piece. I don't think it's just for a dog and pony show. Even if it's 1.11-to-one, if you do enough of those, sooner or later, you're making a difference, and maybe this is, this is just why I'm kind of passionate about them.
Right. And it's setting a precedent. Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Kaufman?
My feeling is, the code's one-to-one. And, you know, that's what we should stick with. If, unless you would go, the pictures we saw of the 97 flood, you could have gone one to point, or 1.5, and it would have not made any difference in that flood. And it's, it's not, it's, that's the steamboat drainage, you know, it's not that land that causes that flooding. So, you know, I would say the code's one-to-one, stick with the one-to-one.
I'm, I'm open to all suggestions. I'm open to all suggestions. Certainly, I will say again, though, it's, there's been improvements on the river. The flooding could get... I think the end result of all the flood control work that's going to be done is to try to make it better, not keep it just the way it is, and especially if they're willing to do that. I think that sets the precedent for a good neighbor. I think it shows that their intention is actually to be there and to take care of the people that rent or buy that property, so. But I'm willing to do whatever the Commission wants to do. So if we have... Commissioner Woosley, you have comments?
Just on this, it's something I'm in favor of, is increasing one-to-one. Just on your same thoughts, this is an extremely sensitive area and all of the things that we discussed, that we had talked about a year ago, that we wanted to add on. I mean, that was a must for me, otherwise I couldn't support it. And, you know, those are the things that they were willing to add, and therefore I could support it. And so, you know, those are the musts for me. And I think the... And one of them was the increased mitigation, and I think we should hear what they're willing to offer above one-to-one. And maybe they've already done some studies that we don't know about. So that's something I would be interested in looking into.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wieske?
I don't necessarily agree with Commissioner Kaufman on this issue. I think that every little bit that we do helps, similar to what you just said. It doesn't have to be the 100-year or the 500-year event that we're going to save people from. But on a 20-year event or a 50-year event, a one-and-a-half-to-one may make a difference. It made a difference, in my opinion, last year when we saw this project come before us. It's made a difference for the other projects in the neighborhood, and I will support above the one-to-one in this area. We're seeing the community try to enhance this area for flood mitigation, and one-to-one is a minimum. And I don't disagree with the calculations and math that Bill Gall brings before us as an engineer and what the federal government has brought before us. And everything downstream that causes the backup into this area that is being worked on will help minimize this also. And I, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to right now just saying that the condition that we work on with this is one-and-a-half-to-one, and that's what it is. It's not more, it's not less, and that's what it is. But that's my personal opinion. As long as it exceeds it and we're working in a specific area to try and enhance what's there, I'm in favor of it. I also agree with what Commissioner Stapleton has brought forward tonight, some of my comments about what we did a year ago. I'm glad that she brought it forward, and the only way I will support it again tonight is with those conditions being brought forward. Thank you.
Claudia, do you have anything? Okay, are there any further comments?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Woosley?
I'd like to ask something, Claudia. With the proposal that was brought up, appear of potential uses for that area and how UNR had asked, and they brought up urban farming or farming in that area, and with the rules that we had looked for with the state and how you could keep farming there, but if it was become a business, how would that work? Is that still an option for that area, even if this is passed tonight?
I think if, as Melissa said, they could put in the clarification to continue ag uses in that area, I think that would solidify it more to allow that they can continue to use it for agriculture. State law allows, has the right to farm. But I think if you put in words to clarify that an agricultural business that the audience member brought forward, I think that would help that to make sure that a use like that could go forward.
And that would be my question, is if it did become a business, you know? But UNR still retained ownership of the property? I was just seeing if that changed anything at all?
No, the ownership, the ownership wouldn't matter. The use goes with the land. The zoning and the uses go with the land, not with the owner.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Had a comment about the ownership?
Mr. Chairman Steve Moll, Thunby F. University. I have some concern about the one-to-five. The ordinance is one-to-one.
Oh, okay. Now, we haven't gotten there yet, so let's...
Okay, all right. But I'd like to make a comment on that one.
When the time comes, we will certainly ask if it gets there. I... You had to do it, didn't you? Personally, I'm not... I think 1.5-to-one is a little extreme. That would actually increase the cost of mitigation by 50%. I think if we make it better by whatever it is greater than one-to-one, I would be happy with it. I don't know if 1.05-to-one is going to cost a half a million dollars or $4. That I don't know. But I do know that 1.5 is half again more than what they have to mitigate right now, and I know that would increase the earth-moving expenses by over 50%, and I wouldn't be prepared to go there. But better than one-to-one, I'm certainly in favor of, and I think they've agreed to stipulate that in the PUD.
You convinced me, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Wieske.
I'll stay with what we did last year. How's that?
Absolutely.
Along with adding the condition on addition, on the agricultural for clarification that Melissa agreed to earlier.
Okay.
And if I can just clarify that a little bit further.
Go ahead.
If you don't specify the number, as Bill said, if it's a teaspoon more, then we would have to approve it. And so we have some other sections of code that have it more, and it's come back as issues. So I just want to clarify that and have it on the record, that if you don't specify that anything more than one-to-one would be...
1.05-to-one. That's more. All right, let's have Melissa. Would you... What would... 1.05, 1.... They want a number, I mean...
We have agreed to do better than the one-to-one, and it's kind of a design issue about what kind of buildings go in there and how we mitigate it, and there's a lot of different ways to do it. We will commit to over one-to-one. I believe the property to the south committed to 1.02-to-one, and we'd certainly do that as a minimum, and we do all we can to make it more than one-to-one. But if you put a specific number on us, it really constrains us for doing innovative designs, and we don't know what the project is going to be and how big the buildings are going to be and how the layout's going to be right now. So we'd like to reserve that to our engineers like Steve Strickland in the future to design it to be better than one-to-one.
I don't believe we put a number on that Manki property. It was just a better than...
Mr. Chairman, I think we did the same exact thing as what you're discussing right now, and we will... That the applicant is to do better than one-to-one, and that was great for us last month. It's in the same neighborhood. It was good for us last year. Let's stay with it.
Okay.
I brought it up for discussion, and...
Thank you.
Now, I wish that we would just continue on quickly.
I'm getting jabbed by a pen here for... All right, so in the motion, it would be greater than 1 point. Okay. With that...
I have a little bit further discussion that I think is important on this item.
Go ahead.
And I know that I was the one that brought up the modifications, just because I was concerned that the applicant would keep their commitment from last time. But for me, the issue here is larger than that, and it's one... And I know we had a long conversation about this last time of compatibility of this use with the surrounding uses, and doesn't matter which way you cut it, this is a sort of dense commercial use, is what they're proposing, and it's surrounded on three sides by, on two sides, by agriculture, you know, and then to the south by, well, open space and low-density, you know, sort of rural residential. And the only compatible use that you could say is compatible is across, you know, what will be a six-lane road, you know? So that's, technically, that's adjacent, but, you know, not as adjacent as, you know, on the other side of the fence. But the majority of the adjacent property is, in my mind, totally incompatible with this proposal. It's, you know, we're talking about offices, you know? On the other side of the fence, there's, you know, ag uses and farming and animals, and that stuff smells, and there are, you know, externalities that come along with that stuff, and, you know, that's why we're here. That's what, you know, zoning and planning is all about, is that you need to look at compatible uses. You need to look at the impact of one use on the neighboring and surrounding uses. That's what we do. And in any other instance, you could never approve, you know, light commercial, you know, offices next to a slaughterhouse. It does not happen. Or next to, you know, farming and ag lands, you know, and cows and what cows smell like and all of that. It just, I mean, that's the reason why we have zoning in the first place, and in my mind, that's the most important. You know, I can't make a number of the findings because of that. That compatibility issue is in some of the findings, and that's the crux of this for me, and I just don't believe that this is a compatible development with what's around it.
Well said. We may not all agree, but well said. With that, I'm still waiting for a motion. Anyone? Somebody has to make...
Unless somebody wants to discuss my well-articulated point, but I'm not interested in making a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Kaufman?
In the case of LDC 12-0015 PUD MSLF of McCarran Center, University Farms, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend the City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance subject to Condition A as written, and I can make all the findings.
Mr. Chairman?
And does that include the modifications that we discussed?
The modification of mitigation of greater than one-to-one.
And the buffering?
There should also be a buffering. There should all be, also be disclosures. Should be the same conditions that we added last year?
I thought the buffering's already in that proposal.
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. No, it's not. I'd be happy to go over what...
Would you please, Nathan?
So we have it on. Thank you, Nathan.
Previously, they had recommended disclosures to surrounding property owners and businesses. It was a 30-foot setback from the northern perimeter, and there was a change to the, to allow the industrial business, industrial commercial types of uses in the northern planning area. And there was discussion this evening regarding extended mitigation.
And also continuation of ag use per NRS 40, was it?
40.140.
Thank you.
That would be in state law, I believe.
State law.
My understanding of the discussion this evening would be to allow ag use on the site. That NRS statute is related to surrounding agriculture uses. So my understanding was the Commission was considering adding language to allow agriculture within the PUD.
Yes. To add agricultural use within the PUD.
Is that clear enough?
And I can second that motion with those conditions.
Can we have discussion before we vote, so I can just put the findings on the record that I cannot make?
Discussion on the motion, certainly. We have a motion in a second. Now we will have discussion on the motion.
As I said, for the reasons I stated before, I cannot support the motion specifically. I cannot make findings in the NRS 278A 2B, as well as in NRS 278A.5, number six, as well as the zoning map amendment findings, B and K.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Let the record show, the motion carries five to one. Good luck with your project.
Let's go a couple more.
Okay. Public hearing number two, LDC 13-00035, Mayberry Salon and Barbers. Will the applicant or the applicant's representative please come forward? Oh, hi, Angela.
Good evening. For the record, Angela Fuas with CFA, representing the applicant. The project before you tonight is a zone change from MF14 to neighborhood commercial on a portion of two parcels totaling a little over 17,000 square feet. The project is located on the corner of Mayberry Drive and Hunter Lake Drive. The Rayleigh Shopping Center is directly north of the project, and as you can see, it's in a neighborhood commercial center right now. Historically, this area has been a mix of zonings, but this parcel in particular that has the split zoning is a barber shop. And back in 2008, it came before you to convert it from a residential use to a barber shop. At that time, it did have the mixed zoning. I talked to the previous owner, who had owned it since the 1940s, and they don't remember ever a reason why it had the mixed zoning. So this zoning request will bring it into conformance to the neighborhood commercial zoning on the northern piece of the property. And then the other property, which is a residential structure on Hunter Lake Drive, is a house right now. The property owner is the same owner that owns the barber shop. It is his intent at some point to develop that site. Any development he does that's non-residential will trigger a special use permit, so it will be before you again. I will just say it's his intent to probably develop it as a barber shop. But again, when and if he does that, it will be back before you as a special use permit for non-residential adjacency. The property to the south, which is zoned SF15, is actually an NV Energy substation, and the property to the west, which is also zoned MF14, is a fire station. I'll be available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Nathan, do you have this one?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Staff concurs with the applicant's presentation. You can make the applicable findings. We did receive one phone call inquiry from an adjacent neighbor on Tacoma Street who had general inquiries about what the zoning might entail. We informed her that a special use permit would be required for any commercial development on the site and discussed the types of intensities allowed within the neighborhood commercial and versus the existing multifamily 14-acre zoning, and she was satisfied with that explanation. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Nathan. Do we have any disclosures on this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wieske?
I met with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Stapleton? None. Commissioner Woosley? None. Commissioner Luck?
No.
And me, neither. Okay, this is a public hearing. I do have two. Do not wish to make a statement, but am in favor, for the record, that would be Charles Cuddy and Roberta Cuddy. You don't wish to make a statement? No? Okay. All right, last chance. This is a public hearing. If you have something to say about this issue, now is your opportunity. Hearing and seeing no one, closing the public hearing, bringing it back to the Commissioners for questions, comments, or possible motion.
Mr. Chairman? Go ahead. Commissioner Woosley?
Commissioner Woosley?
I'd like to make a motion if no one wants to discuss further.
No, go ahead.
In case of number LDC 13-00035, Mayberry Salon and Barbers, based upon compliance of the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance. I can make the findings.
I'll second the motion. Commissioner Stapleton?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show, the motion carries six to zero. Good luck with your project. LDC 00040, Oliver Avenue and Montello Street zoning map.
Good evening, Commissioners. Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. This is a city-initiated project that Council is bringing for your recommendation. The request is to amend the zoning on three parcels in the Oliver and Montello intersection. This is a part of an overall effort to improve the northeast neighborhood plan area. Several years ago, the city acquired these three parcels as part of an overall effort to improve the community. They were previously subject to quite a bit of crime with their commercial uses. The city has since demolished all three
uses. The city has since demolished all three commercial businesses on the site. And now this is the second part of the plan, is to change the zoning on them to a single-family designation. The northeast neighborhood plan has a strong preference towards single-family homes, and the zone change to an SF6 would be compatible with that. Staff can make the findings and recommends approval.
Thank you, Nathan. This is a public hearing. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Oh, hi Lonnie. Come on up. You wish to speak on this side?
Yes, hello. I'm Lonnie Feimster. I'm a property owner, and I provide employment in northeast Reno. I have several parcels in the area, so I'm a taxpayer also. And I'm not sure what's going on. I went and talked to 12 people in the community. When I got the yellow cards that were sent out, I think unfortunately, they went out right at Christmas. So they took probably a little longer than normally to get to folks. But I talked about a dozen families about this. And we went through a long process on this a few years ago about changing the parcels to neighborhood commercial. Now, at the time, I was concerned because I own a half an acre next to the eastmost property on the northeast corner of Oliver and Montello. And I was quite involved with the work that was done in the area, worked with the police department and the city council to help get rid of the problems in the area with overt sales of drugs. And it was really not so much those three parcels, but the house on Five Street that the drug dealers looked at. They just wouldn't hang around the corner because it was commercial area. They could intermingle in the people going out to stores or whatever. But nevertheless, I thought if there was going to be something positive for the community, that would be great. My concern is, and I haven't talked to staff on this, but I did read the staff report out there, and none of the dozen families that I talked to understand why we've changed this to neighborhood commercial, and now we want to change it back to single-family residential. And also, there were some surveys done in the community as to what the people in the community. And being, I call, a lifetime resident of northeast Reno, I don't quite live there all the time, but I've always owned property there since I was 20 years old. My family lives, I've got maybe 15, 20 family members live in the area. And I have been president of the NACP, and a lot of the churches and community members have looked at me to be an advocacy of issues in the area. But I don't know quite what's going on or why we would be changing this back after these years. But really, the big issue is, I was under the impression, and everyone else, there was some public meetings. And I noticed in the staff report, it said that there was brought to the neighborhood advisory board. Well, the Northeast Reno Neighborhood Advisory Board seems like to me, since I get notice, has counseled most of its meetings over the last year. I didn't know. And of course, having property, creating jobs, providing homes, I really think the people should get notice of when something's going on, so there's a better understanding of what's happening. So I'm a little concerned about this. I don't know who's planning what. I've talked to other individuals that operate services in the community, and no one is aware of what's being planned and why. So I have a whole lot of questions, but I'm very concerned because this doesn't seem in line with what we were told at other public meetings we had in the community. So I'm happy to work with the staff or whatever, but I'm a little confused right now, so.
Thank you, Lonnie. Okay, what is, what is the will of the commission? Any questions, comments?
I have a question.
Commissioner Kaufman.
So, answer the basic question. Why are we changing it to Lonnie's, you know, question? Why, from non-commercial back to?
Well, for the record, Krista Lee, Gentry Management Analyst. We, the city acquired the property and demolished it using Community Development Block grant funds back in 2007, 2008. And we've recently received communication from HUD saying that we are out of non-compliance with our agreement with them for receiving those funds, because as part of the demolition process, we were required to redevelop them. And it's also my understanding that back originally, there was a plan to do some home ownership activities there, but then the market crashed, so those became inviable. And the most recent proposals we've received haven't penciled out either. And so at this point, doing rental housing is kind of our goal right now. We don't have approval from HUD yet, but that will, that's our plan.
If I could follow up on that, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. As you're aware, we're looking at a zoning map amendment. The existing zoning on the site is neighborhood commercial. What the city is requesting is single-family SF6 zoning. Basically, with an NC zone, you could do small-scale commercial. You could do multifamily with a site plan review, that sort of thing. A single-family SF6 zone pretty much limits it to single-family homes and potentially a park or open space, that sort of thing.
Did this go before the NAB?
As Mr. Feimster indicated, the Northeast NAB hasn't been meeting regularly. The NAB members were forwarded the information, and we did not receive any comments.
All right.
Any further questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Stapleton.
I have two questions. First question, on the parcel right there on Audi, I know that most of those, the single-family homes there back up to Audi, that one's right there on the corner. Is, maybe this is already accounted for in code, but it seems to me like that's a main arterial street and a really busy intersection. And is that appropriate to have single-family right there on that one parcel? And, or is there anything to, you know, sort of buffer that, that intersection?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. There already is SF6 zoning there. I mean, this being the corner piece, there's nothing in code that distinguishes that specifically that says a corner piece, you know, should have considerations. But any site development with building permit would take engineering access concerns into play.
Okay. Did Bill look like he had something to add?
Bill, go off for the record. I pretty much got up to confirm what Nathan said, but yeah, we wouldn't allow access onto Audi for this, for FS6 or any other development there. It's simply too close. They would have to obtain access from Oliver or Montello for that site.
Okay.
Just by code.
And then my second question is more of a, sort of a comment and a question. I know the, I'm pretty familiar with the history of the revitalization of the Oliver-Montello neighborhood, and the city's done really an unbelievable job in turning this neighborhood around. But a big part of that was working with stakeholders in the neighborhood. And so I just, you know, I guess I'm a little disappointed on the outreach that Mr. Feimster's here, and he didn't know about this beforehand. You know, there's a lot of stakeholders, and it could just be, you know, staff transition. I know there was a lot of leadership on this in years past, and now there's less staff. But it's just a little disappointing to hear that the stakeholders who were sort of involved with this, you know, they redid the whole park. The Housing Authority owns a number of parcels here. There's been just a dramatic change in this neighborhood, and the stakeholders and the working group was involved in every step of that. And they had a larger vision for those corner parcels, I know. They wanted some sort of, you know, community or commercial use on that corner. So, you know, I understand that maybe that's less practical now, and there's issues with the grants you guys got. But I guess I'm a little disappointed in, you know, the lack of outreach and inclusion in stakeholders in determining the use of this parcel, especially because it's a city-owned parcel that was bought specifically, you know, at the request of the neighborhood and as a result of this project. So you don't have to, I don't know.
Can I ask a question? I know this is not protocol.
No, we have already gone past that unless someone were to ask you a question, but we're, are there any further? I'm trying to keep this within the proper framework, Marilyn, I really am, okay? We're not, we were, we're in questions.
I mean, I guess, I guess, just knowing, I mean, the amount that the city really has invested in these parcels in this neighborhood. I mean, the city bought these parcels, they paid to demolish the properties. There's just a ton of investment here, and this is sort of the capstone to it, you know, is Reno Housing Authority sort of finally, you know, they put some new houses in there, and they put new houses on some of the houses that had been torn down. And figuring out the use of these corner blocks, this is where there was all this drug activity, and there were so many issues. And to me, that's really the capstone of the transformation of this neighborhood. And it just seems like there should be a little bit more, you know, and I'm throwing a wrench in your works, I know. I just...
It's my understanding that my supervisor, Jody Rilla Goodman, has been working with an interested party for quite some time to develop one of the parcels, if not more than one. And it just, it hasn't gone anywhere. And we're at a point that HUD's on our back saying, you know, you can't just keep letting these parcels set vacant. And we have an opportunity right now to, if HUD approves, to have some funding to redevelop those parcels.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, I just have one more. So does that mean that you guys aren't going to sell these with the entitlement to build single-family, that you guys are going to develop them? What's the plan?
Well, we don't have a plan approved by HUD yet. I mean, we're...
This is zoning, zoning question. We're not talking about...
Right, but this is a city-owned parcel. So the question is, what's the goal in the city-owned property in you guys seeking this zoning?
Well, our goal is to use it for a CDBG eligible activity, which could be homeownership, rental housing, neighborhood centers, parks, public offices.
Okay, thank you.
If I could comment, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, this is a zone change, and the city council did initiate this. So this was at, we're doing their bidding, but I think it would be appropriate to forward these comments on to them for their consideration.
I appreciate that. I guess I was just looking for the backstory. So I appreciate that. I'd be willing to make a motion on this if no one else has any discussion or questions.
There's no other comments or questions.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Please, sir.
Commissioner Wiskey.
Thank you. Nathan, if you would, please. And if you want to defer this after the question, that's fine. Mr. Feimster alluded to the problems with the drug dealings in the past has not necessarily been the residences and the houses in the area. But when it was commercial, the drug dealers were going in and out of the businesses. This, without having businesses here and the potential for houses, don't we eliminate past problems or help prevent past problems by discussing residential construction here versus commercial construction?
I don't want to speak on law enforcement concerns.
That's fine. Maybe Alex is here. Maybe Alex would address it.
Yes, Alex Woolley for the record, Code Enforcement Manager for the city. That is correct, what you stated earlier, Dagney. I was one of the leaders at the city that met with the community and representatives. And you are correct. One of the biggest issues we had was that as commercial property, they weren't able to trespass these individuals because they would just claim to be, they would just walk in and buy a soda or a pack of gum or what have you. So therefore, they were patrons. So they weren't able to actually control their presence there. But it being residential property, without a doubt, you do have the ability. It's much easier to trespass them. As far as the plans that the city had, we had talks, different departments, different representatives had talks. At one point, it was Big Brothers, Big Sisters. We had a partnership that Jessica Sprouse was working on. Unfortunately, that didn't fall through. There were some other ventures that we were looking at, and unfortunately, they didn't fall through either. So we were pretty much left with receiving complaints from neighborhoods, from residents in the neighborhood. Hey, City Arena, what are you doing with these three properties? They've sitting here. We get code enforcement cases there. So fortunately, it looks like there is an avenue that we can use to try to make them productive and do something with these properties, which would be great, get them back on the tax rolls and get it in residential hands, we think, and with some ownership. That's another big thing for us, having actual ownership of the property representation. We think that'll be a positive impact. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
No further questions?
I second.
Commissioner Kaufman.
In the case of LDC 13-00040, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend the City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance, and I can make all the findings.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second. By Commissioner Luck. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Let the record show, the motion carries six to zero. Good luck with your project. And at this point, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. Like the reading of the City of Reno Planning Commission and go to item four under public hearings, LDC 13-00039, Red Rock Road zoning map amendment. Nathan?
For the record, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. This is a council-initiated request to amend the zoning on three par, or excuse me, to amend the zoning at the intersection, on two parcels at the intersection of Red Rock Road and Silver Lake Roads. The parcels were recently annexed to the City of Reno as a part of a pending private development request. However, there's currently no city zoning on the site. In previous years, city code allowed for the automatic transition from county code to compatible city zoning upon annexation. This provision has since expired, and it's been removed from code, and hence the development request before you this evening. The site is located in the Reno-Stead Joint Corridor Plan and features a general commercial subland use designation. Staff is requesting the community commercial CC zoning designation on the site, which is compatible with both the county's general commercial designation and the Reno-Stead Joint Corridor Plan designation on the site. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Nathan. Do we have any questions? Comments, motion? Commissioner Woosley?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to propose a motion. In case number LDC 13-00039, Red Rock Road zoning map amendment, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend the City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show, the motion carries six to zero. Item five, LDC 13-00011, Northwest Gateway Zoning Map Amendment. Will the applicant or their representative please step forward? You have 15 minutes.
Good evening. Derek Wilson with Rubicon Design Group, representing the applicant. This is a zoning request. It's a follow-on to our master plan amendment that was completed several months ago. I'm fairly confident that the real substantive issues on this site were handled in our discussions before you at the NABs, where we had some support, and at City Councils. So I think I can just conclude my presentation, but I'd be happy to elaborate if needed.
Thank you. Nathan?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Staff can confer with the applicant's statements and can also make the applicable findings, just to give perspective on the location that we're talking about, off of Rob Drive here, the parcel, request to community commercial zoning designation, which is consistent with the master plan designation. Available for any questions?
Thank you, Nathan. Are there any questions from the commissioners? Comments, motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wiskey.
In the case of LDC 13-00011, Northwest Gateway Zoning Map Amendment, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance, and I can make all of the findings.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show, the motion carries six to zero. Item six, LDC 13-00034, Charlin's PUD Amendment, Planning Unit Nine. Will the applicant or the representative please come forward?
Mr. Chairman, before the applicant starts, I have a disclosure that my employer does work with, contract work with Renown. At this time, we do not have any open contracts or existing contracts with Renown. I have checked with our legal staff, who's confirmed the fact that I can remain on, listening to this item and do not need to recuse myself.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiskey. Please identify yourself for the record. You have 15 minutes.
Thank you. My name is Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers, and I'm representing...
My name is Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers and I'm representing Renown Health. With me tonight is Tom Kazazza with Renown. This is a request for an amendment to the Charlin's PUD to accommodate development of an urgent care facility in Planning Unit Nine. Planning Unit Nine is located at the corner of Rob Drive and Charlin's Avenue in Northwest Reno. The amendments involve hours of operation, street sections, and signage, and in terms of hours of operation, the request is for the proposed urgent care facility to operate between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM to serve the surrounding community. The second amendment involves modifications to street sections. Currently, street sections in the handbook do not allow for sidewalks on the north side of Charlin's Avenue, and we would like to have sidewalks to connect to the bus stop and connect to adjacent sidewalks in the Charlin's PUD. And the third amendment involves signage and we would like to add some additional The only signage that would be allowed would be right here at the intersection and we'd like to add some freestanding signs at the project entries to direct people into the services. So with that, I believe all the findings can be made, the modifications are minor, and they only impact Planning Unit Nine, not any other planning unit in the PUD. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Vern?
Good evening, Vern Close, Senior Planner. I believe Ms. Lindell adequately addressed the issues with this request. Probably the primary concern of staff is the 24-hour operations, but as indicated in the staff report, there's proper buffering and separation from the adjacent residences to the north from this building and this operation. And the, even though it's a 24-hour emergency care facility, there's very little likelihood of, there wouldn't be a whole lot of ambulances coming and going from this place because the people going there would be brought by other persons and the only time ambulances would need to come is when they needed to be transferred to another facility such as a hospital. So the other issue is the sidewalk and the signs are, are minor nature and they're probably pretty necessary for this particular type of operation. So staff is supporting this, we can make all the findings. I just had one phone call information and this did go to the NAB. That concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Vern. Are there any disclosures on this? None? Okay. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Stapleton?
I just have one question about this. We're giving the 24-hour use, what's, what you're requesting is the amendment to have a 24-hour use and that seems appropriate for this project. Is there any risk of in the future, you know, this entitlement is granted and if it is no longer an urgent care, then, you know, something else could, could have still this entitlement for a 20-hour use that would not, 24-hour use that would not be as, you know, compatible to the neighborhood? I mean, is there any risk like that? And that might be a question for staff or Melissa.
You could tie the, and I believe we did tie the 24-hour operations to urgent care only in the handbook and we could, if I didn't do that already, Vern's going to check, we could tie it just for 24-hour, only, only for the urgent care or medical use.
That would be great if that's possible, that's my only question of concern.
Thank you.
Melissa?
Commissioner Luck?
I have a question, Commissioner Luck, I have a question. This is regarding the left-in traffic. Let's see, it says, I noticed there was a comment in the NAB that someone was concerned about the proposed left-in that's going to be off of Rob Drive turning in to, to the parking lot there. Can you, can you tell me a little bit about the left-in and where exactly that's going to be?
I have Paul Suleggi here, who did the traffic report and worked on the left-in and he's going to be able to come up here and tell you all about it.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. For the record, I am Paul Suleggi and did the traffic analysis. We did, it was important for the hospital to have access for folks arriving from the west on Charlin's to be able to get in. The median in this area is all fully allocated with left-turn pockets going into where the Maverick is and then the left-turn pocket at the Signal. And so for a person arriving from the west, the U-turn is prohibited at this intersection here because of the geometry. So we did extensive evaluation to see if, if this access would work. And we found the, the volume and the spacing, the spacing wasn't ideal, but we were able to get the level of service, the volume, and the site distance all to work. Do you have further specific questions about those issues?
Yes, so say you are driving towards the freeway, heading south on Rob. Are you going to be shortening that left-in turn into that current shopping center?
I, I guess I didn't do the specific...
There's a pretty, there's a pretty long left turn into the current shopping center across from that?
Yes.
So do you have to shorten that?
We, we did calculations there and found that we were going to ensure that sufficient storage distance was, was left there to serve that volume. There was a modification in that pocket, but we did calculations for both directions to ensure that we were not reducing storage in one place and hurting ourselves in another.
Okay, I appreciate the technicality of that. I know from being up there, it can be a little hairy in that area, can be pretty complicated driving visibility and things like that, so I just want to make sure that the comment in the NAB was addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have one for the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Wiskey?
The only ambulance service, REMZA service at this time, or at any time feeding this will be when called in. This is not intended to be a REMZA substation for the northwest, is it?
No, it's, it's going to be an urgent care, so it would be people needing, needing that kind of treatment generally that are brought in by family members or bringing yourself in, so it wouldn't be an ambulance-based area.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
I would make a motion if there's no further questions.
If there being no further questions, let's have a motion.
In the case of LDC 13-00034, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the amendment to the Design Standards Handbook, subject to Condition A and including the modification tying the medical use to the 24-hour use, allowed hours.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Commissioner Luck. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show, the motion carries six to zero. Good luck with your project. Item seven, LDC 13-00036, Sky Vista PUD Amendment. Will the applicant or the representative come forward? You have 15 minutes.
For the record, Angela Fuess with CFA, representing the applicant. I wanted to start by giving you a little bit of history on this PUD. The original Sky Vista PUD was approved by the city back in 1994. And at that time, the developer dedicated 80 acres of land to Washoe County Parks, which later became the North Valleys Regional Park, and they also dedicated about 32.5 acres to the Washoe County School District. The intent at that time was to develop a middle school and an elementary school on this site. As you can see, development has occurred all around the site. They had 10 years to develop a school site or the site would revert back to the developer. That was back in 1999 when it was officially dedicated to the school district. So a little less than 10 years later, back in 2006, the school district went back to the developer and said, "We do not have a need for two schools, we just want to develop one school." So the developer then proposed a project for duets, two-story duets on a portion of the site, and then the rest of the site was still going to be used for a school. That project was approved by the Planning Commission, but was denied by City Council. Since that time, it's been 13 years since the original approval back in 1999 to turn that site into a site that would be used for a school. The school district has come forth and said, "We have no need for a school, either a middle school or an elementary school, at this site now or in the foreseeable future." They actually have another school site that they would be looking at if there's ever a demand for a school, excuse me, a school site in this area. So in October of this year, the 32.5 acres was deeded back to the developer for future development. With the history of this project and because the developer's been around since 1994 and seeing the way the community has developed and the project has developed, you know, he has a good first-hand knowledge of what's needed out here and what's appropriate. He, first of all, talked to the Sky Vista Homeowners Association to find out if they were interested in turning the site into public open space. They've said publicly that they have no interest in acquiring any more open space, that they have, have to have the responsibility of taking care of. There was a letter in your packet that confirmed that. We also have another letter that said that they have no desire to have any more open space. They're in support of this project. During the previous project back in 2006, the Sky Vista HOA was actually neutral, so that's a good indication that they are looking forward to this project. Before we submitted, we also met with the City of Reno Parks Department to see if they had any interest in this site as public open space. They said no, they actually have another 25-acre site that's adjacent to the North Valleys Regional Park that they're looking at for a future site. Within the Sky Vista HOA, there's about eight pocket parks and seven miles of trail systems, so there's quite a bit of open space for a PUD. So the project before you tonight is a culmination of what we heard back in 2006 from the homeowners and the City Council and the planning commissioners and the homeowners association. The biggest concerns at that time were the two-story and the unknown of what was going to happen on the site. So this project has eliminated all of the two-story buildings, everything proposed is single-story. There's no issues of blocking anyone's views from any, any of the adjacent neighbors. We've also added some wide setbacks, and those will be landscaped setbacks. Those range from 25 feet to 50 feet around the entire perimeter. We also have a four-foot wide walking path that will tie into the existing trail system across the street off of Silver Sky Parkway. And then the fact that we've put a site plan together that, again, we approached City Council with, we approached the Sky Vista Homeowners Association with, we spoke to staff, we spoke to the Reno Code Enforcement Department, and got some buy-in, and we talked to the homeowners and said, "What would you like to see?" This is the product of, again, of what we have. So we have 338 units. These are condominium townhome-style units, but they'll actually be used as apartments. And so what that means is we will do a final map to create individual lots per unit, so you'll have a separate APN number and a separate lot for each unit, but the master developer, Silverwing Development, will manage the project as an apartment project. And down the road, if he wants to develop them and sell them as condos, he has the ability to do that. This is something that's done quite frequently, especially in this economy where you have issues with construction defects and lawsuits, and just changes in the economy and what the economy wants, it gives you the ability and the flexibility to do both. So it's 338 units, they're all one and two-bedroom units. The advantage to one and two-bedroom units is that we're not competing with anyone around us. Everything around us is single-family and three to five bedrooms, so one and two bedrooms is really a different product. Because it's a single-story project, one of the things that we've had to comply with is ADA. This means that everything has to be ADA compliant in terms of, you know, steps, the steepness of the entire site has to be very, very tight, there's no steps within the parking area, there's no steps within the individual units. There's an added expense and cost to that, so take that into consideration as we're going through some of these modifications that we're going to be talking to you about in the future. Each unit will have its own single-car garage, and each unit will have a porch and, a front porch and a back patio area. The way it's been designed is that everything internally is private, so you have one entrance in, which is here, and then you have an emergency access entrance and exit over here. This complies with the fire department code. We have heard some concerns from some of the neighbors that in the case of an emergency, is one main entrance in and out enough? So to comply with their issues, and again, it's not a concern by the fire department or the city engineer or planning department, it's a concern that some of the property owners around us have talked to us about. So this entrance here will be gated and the only way in or out will be for emergency access. However, we have added basically like a hand crank ability so that if you're in the project and you're trying to get out in the case of an emergency, you have the ability, ability to use the hand crank to open the gate to get out. One advantage again to this is in the case of emergency, you're not waiting for the fire department to come in and open the gate. We also have camera surveillance that will be on that site, so if anyone is illegally opening that access, we'll have them on camera. The entire project will be fenced. Solid fencing will be on these sides here, and those are the sides that pretty much abut any kind of residential development. This area here, which is abutting Silver Sky Parkway, will be fenced, but it will be open fencing. This is the main entrance, there'll be no gates, so it'll be open freely for, you know, the residents to come in and out. That will also be under surveillance, so if there's any crime within the project, we will know what's going on because we'll be able to catch whoever's coming in or out on the camera. Beyond that, as I mentioned, everything is single-story and must be ADA compliant. This is something that's, we feel is going to be an attractive to an older demographic. Seniors, you know, this is something that they look for these days. And this is not a age-restricted apartment project, but just based on the market and the need, we feel that it's one and two bedrooms, ADA compliant, you have your own garage. A lot of these things contribute to a senior demographic wanting to live here. Some of the amenities within the project include a dog park, which is here. Initially, we had the dog park over here, this is about a 30,000 square foot, we're calling it passive recreation area, and we decided to move the dog park here so that we don't have dogs in here disturbing these property owners. This area will then be turned into, like I said, a passive recreation area where we can do things like a community garden. We could have kids that want to play soccer back there, or just people within the project that want to have a picnic back there. We also want to add the ability to have a storage area so that if tenants don't have enough storage within their unit, they can use this off-site storage facility area for personal storage. One of the requirements as part of this project is that you have to park in your garage. And because it's privately maintained, we'll be able to enforce that parking requirement so that if anyone is storing things in the garage rather than parking, like I do, this will restrict them from doing that. We also have a pool area and a community center in this area here, and these buildings here are actually what we're going to call like supersized ADA compliant buildings. So if anything comes up where somebody is, I would say, maybe they have a, like a rascal that they need more, bigger garages and need to put the rascal in the back of their car, they could have a supersized unit to meet their needs. So the purpose of this whole project was to try and create something that's specific to this market. We didn't want to compete with the other development around us, and we wanted to do something that'll actually complement the neighborhood and so that we could have neighbors being supportive of this project. One of the concerns we've had with this property is that it's become a nuisance. You know, it's been here undeveloped since the Sky Vista PUD started in 1994. That's a long time for development to be constructed around this 32 acres and have nothing developed. So it's really a donut hole in an area that's, that's grown over time. They've had issues with people doing shooting and target practice, people have had their windows shot at, it's a concern. It's also a great site if you're underage and need a place to go and drink and do drugs. We found one dead body on the site as a result of a drug overdose. This site is widely used illegally for dumping, there's furniture, there's junk. It's been an issue for code enforcement, it's been an issue for the Reno Police Department, so cleaning up this site will be huge. One of the other concerns is the noise and the dust from the folks that are out there riding their bikes. So by developing the site, we're going to get rid of those nuisance issues. There's a couple things that we need to address as part of the staff report. And one of those is landscaping. We are proposing a 15% landscape requirement. Because it's a multifamily project, code requires 20%. So that actually means we're looking at about five acres, what we're asking for is about five acres of landscaping as opposed, as opposed to 6.5 acres of landscaping. about five acres of landscaping as opposed to 6.5 acres of landscaping. In terms of tree numbers, 15% would be about 708 trees. That's still a lot of trees, as opposed to 944 trees. The biggest difference between this project and other multifamily projects is that because we're single-story and the way it's designed with garages facing each other and alleyways between them, we have a lot of surface that's either constructed on or paved on. So, by putting in landscaping for the sake of putting in landscaping, it's really going above and beyond what meets the intent of this project. We have sufficient perimeter landscaping around the entire project. As I said, we have landscaping buffers between 25 feet and 50 feet. The entire front perimeter will be sufficiently landscaped, actually in abundance. You know, at some point, you're just putting in trees to put in trees, and it becomes a problem. You're here in the middle of the desert, and you're forced to put in more trees than even looks natural in this area. So, we're asking that you take these things into consideration. Police, for instance, has raised a concern with putting in landscaping in some of the Paseo areas. And those are the areas where we have building fronts fronting each other. If we have too much landscaping in there, the police department feels it could be an area where criminals can go in there and hide, and it would be difficult for the police department to find them. So, it's not just an issue of us asking for 15%. There's other pieces to this and other agencies that I think would be in support of having less landscaping than would be typically required on a project like this. Another benefit to this is that it really creates a community feel. And by that, I mean, we have the project fronts facing each other. So, if you go outside on your patio right now in a typical single-family home, you go outside and you sit in your front patio area, and you look across the street, and that's what you're doing. You're looking across the street at somebody else's house. In this project, when you go outside and you sit in the front, you're looking across a landscaped area, and across that is the other person's front porch. These areas vary between 20 and 30 feet. So, you're not dealing with traffic in front of you. It just, it creates a nice feel. It creates much more of a sense of community. Maybe people will actually talk to their neighbors as opposed to now where we all, you know, drive into our garage and close the door and never go out again. So, there's sufficient landscaping within these areas that we feel meets the intent of this project. So, the landscaping was one big thing that we talked about. The next big thing was the elevation. As you can see, this elevation down here is the front of the building, and we have two different elevations that I can point out. But, just for reference, you know, it's all in the PUD handbook. We'll just start with this one. So, the fronts are designed to look like a bungalow. And this is like a craftsman-style bungalow that you'd see potentially in the old Southwest or that you would see in the 1920s when it was popular. It's a great look to a neighborhood. It definitely ties in with what's around us. It's not the same old single-family unit that you see everywhere else you go. It's cute, and it's inviting, and I think people will actually want to sit on their front patio and their front porch and their rear patio because it's interesting to look at what's across from you. The rear elevations are the ones on top. So, the first one is the articulated rear elevation where we have these gabled roof lines. We have these faux chimneys. These are the porches in the rear and the garages in the rear. So, the question has come up. If nobody can see the rear elevations or the rear vertical elevation, which is the roof line, what is the point of being required to fully articulate these areas? And we're 100% in agreement that if anyone can see these areas, yes, they should be articulated. And when I say anyone, I mean if you can see it out your window, if you could see it driving by, if you can see it from the adjacent house looking over, yes, let's articulate those areas. However, the way the site plan has been put together, we've eliminated people looking at the backs of buildings. The only reason you go to the backs of a building is if you're going into your garage, even if you have trash. We don't have community trash enclosures. You're not walking outside to some community trash enclosure. You have your own individual trash enclosure. You put it out, the garbage man comes and picks it up. No one's going to see these articulated areas. So, out of the entire site plan, we've highlighted basically five areas that we feel could be seen from any point. Can I keep going? Are you, okay. That we feel can be seen from any points. These are the areas that we fully intend to articulate 100% all of the buildings. The rest of the project, as I said, you're only going to see the front. So, these areas will be the front. These areas will be the front. The only people coming in these alleyways, again, are to get to your garage. This is a modification from, we're requesting this as part of the PUD. Again, it's a PUD. It's supposed to allow for flexibility. And the final issue had to do with parking. Based on the site plan, I apologize. This is small. If you could zoom in a little bit more.
Angela, you're going to have to keep this really brief.
Okay. We have modified the site slightly to add about 25 more parking spaces. The garages will be used for parking, and then we have guest parking. We added a couple areas in here and here, and basically what that did is shifted this building over. So, we have additional parking spaces in here. So, if you come to visit, you'll have plenty of parking. By shifting this over, the setback on the west side has been modified. So, we are asking for a modification from what I already put into the PUD handbook of 45 feet on the west side to 25 feet, which basically would be this modification here. And with that, I will hand it over to Nathan and be available to answer questions after that.
Thank you, Angela. Nathan?
Good evening. Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Just to start off, staff did receive two phone calls related to the proposal in opposition. Specifically, the issues of concerns were maintaining the open space areas and a preference if the site were developed for single-family homes. We did receive one email in that same vein, and also one email in support of the project indicating that the open space area as it currently stands has some nuisance issues. One other thing before I get started going over the project is, we did hand out a revised SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. We just received that from the police department last night. So, that is there for your review. If I could summarize that before I get into this. Essentially, there, the police department does have concerns with the overall site design wherein they prefer to be able to see the fronts of buildings from their patrol car. The SEPTED comments allude to that. However, they did recommend that this could possibly be mitigated through some sort of closed-circuit monitoring on the site. I did want to bring that up for your review, although any condition related to closed-circuit monitoring may be more appropriate at the tentative map phase when we get to that stage. Regarding the applicant's presentation, staff generally concurs with it and can make the findings with two key conditions that were brought to your attention in the staff report, specifically to address project architecture and to ensure that the project landscaping is consistent with the standards throughout the Sky Vista PUD. I have to correct Ms. Fuess's comments on the 20%, landscaping is required in every village in the Sky Vista PUD. There's not one that isn't 20%. So, every development within that handbook requires 20%. The question, you know, for staff and the NRS findings is, you know, what, any variation from a standard code provision needs to serve a public interest and not a private one. Staff can't make that finding with the landscape provisions. It just doesn't seem like a rational basis to vary from every other village within the PUD handbook. Of particular concern was NRS finding 278A 500, number two, and that's addressed with condition B. The proposed design does not comply with minimum code related to building articulation, specifically RMC 1812 301A. This is building articulation. Every commercial multifamily building in the City of Reno must comply with that. We do agree PUDs allow for variation. However, when you read code, a PUD should comply or exceed code. We don't see any public interest in not meeting this standard code provision for building articulation, while the applicant is suggesting that five of the units be modified with full articulation. Even their articulated models don't meet the standard code. We did include some examples of some highly articulated townhouse buildings that would certainly meet code. They would far exceed code. It's a different design than what they're proposed, but again, any other multifamily commercial building in the city would be required to adhere to this. Staff believes that part of the intent with the building articulation is to enhance the built environment, not just from outside of the community, but from within the community. That's the intent of the design considerations, the standard code provisions, and should be applicable to the community as a whole. The applicant is also only proposing articulating the rear elevations of five of the 46 townhouse blocks. Design standards are not only meant to enhance the visual appeal of buildings outside the development, but again, within it. And in staff's opinion that I apologize. It's not the best reprographic, but a 243-foot vertical plane with no articulation other than some varying chimney sweeps, it certainly doesn't meet code, and we don't think that it meets the intent of code. And that's why we're recommending condition B to ensure that they meet the minimum code standards for building articulation within the development. With condition B relating building articulation and condition C related to the landscaping, staff can make the applicable findings and recommend, a recommendation of approval with approval of those conditions. I'm available for any questions, and Bill Gall has, is available for any of your engineering questions.
Thank you, Nathan. We're going to have disclosures on this. Does anyone have anything to disclose?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wieski?
Thank you. I met with the applicant's representative, and I have received a couple of emails on this.
Commissioner Stapleton?
I met with the applicants and the applicant's representative and received emails.
Commissioner Woosley?
I have both met with the applicant and applicant representative and received emails.
Commissioner Luck?
I had a phone conversation with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Kaufman?
I met with the applicant and the applicant's representative, and I've had emails.
And as have I. This is a public hearing. We do have several requests to speak. If you do wish to speak on this item, you need to fill out a request-to-speak form over here. Please do it now. First up is Alan Davis, Davies?
Alan Gess, G-U-E-S-S?
No. No, Davis or Davies. There is an Alan Gess, but Alan, meet Alan. Alan, meet Alan.
Yeah. Greetings. I can use, can I use these that are here? Anyway, I'm a homeowner.
Please identify yourself and then speak into the mic so it's
My name's Alan Davis, and I am a homeowner in this area. I was purchased a home in here when they were first built here on Camel Rock. Yeah, okay, thank you. Anyway, I live here. Many things I've said are absolutely true. It's a vacant lot now. It's horrible. We got motorcycles running all over the place, dirt, noise, drives my wife crazy. I'd love to see something built in here. We were originally wanting the elementary school and the schools in there. That's one of the reasons we bought there, so that way it would be nice, you know, have nobody right behind us. My concern with this is this is hugely dense. There's a lot of people crammed into this small area. The little rectangular area over here, now we're talking about storage. For what? Somebody's crappy old trailer? I don't know. I am concerned about that. As a first responder, I'm concerned about only one entrance. I can't ima, I don't know if the fire department's really signed off on this. It says, "Yeah, we can only go in one way." That just blows my mind that they would say that. Bless you. The whole idea with the Sky Vista community was open space. I know they've tried, you know, put trails around it. I get that, and that was nice. But, this just seems hugely dense to the rest of the community. Now, there are apartments there. They put some apartments in another part. Those are nice. I just don't think this really conforms to any of these homes over here. I mean, we've got, what, 15 homes, 16 homes here, and then how many in the same amount of area? Wow. That's my concern, is I don't think it really conforms to the spirit of Sky Vista being open space, a lot of single-family homes. I don't see this. I would love to see it developed. I just don't know that I'm really highly excited about this dense of population in that area. So, anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Alan Gess. You have three minutes.
Sorry. I've been waiting a long time.
And we appreciate you sticking around.
My name is Alan Gess. I'm a little dry. Thanks for the opportunity. First time I've ever been in the chamber, so I didn't have any idea what to expect. If I knew, I could have used visual aid.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
I would have. I'm sorry?
Into the microphone, because you're being recorded.
Oh, sorry. If I would have known I could have brought visual aid, I certainly would have done that. But, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was compelled to appear for the same reasons as the other Alan. It's just the, it's not the development of the space, but how the space is proposed to be developed. It's very, very dense. I've been a resident of the area for eight years. I know all of my neighbors on both sides of my street for two blocks, first name, and their dogs. And it's a nice community. We're very happy there. One of my neighbors is a psychologist. There's an accountant. There's retired state employees, military, university professors. It's a nice community of nice folks in the area that work hard to keep it that way. We compare notes about who's got the greenest lawn, and certainly the retired guys have more time to devote to that than I do. There's only three rental units in the two blocks that I'm referring to. I know the owners for both of those, and the tenants have been there for multiple years. So, we're not looking at a lot of rental property in the neighborhood. This area that's the open space is, granted, it's used by motorcyclists. There is a little bit of a dust issue up there. It's not that often. It happens occasionally. I'm not complaining about it. What I am concerned about is the density of this development. It doesn't match anything that's around it. It doesn't match any of the architecture or anything that was designed for the Sky Vista area. 338 units on 32 acres, simple math, you could put two and a half of those units on my lot, and my lot's the smallest on the block. It's just extremely dense with a street that is really not designed to deal with that kind of traffic. So, I just appeal to you guys to really take a hard look at this, at how it's planned, what it looks like. I don't think you'd want this in your neighborhood. And I've heard comments here tonight, very informative, by the way, about compatible use, about adjacent properties. Please take into consideration when you're looking at this project at what's around it and how it's going to impact it, because it's really not very fitting to our community, and we're opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Dayton? You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name's Gary Dayton, and I've had the, I work for a construction company here in town, Our Construction. We've had a very, very good working relationship with Silverwing Development for the last 15-plus years. And I just wanted to say that the thought of the construction work that we haven't seen for the last five or six years, this project could put quite a few construction workers back to work. And I just, you know, we've had nothing but a good relationship with Silverwing, and I just wanted to speak on their behalf for that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Richard Lemby?
Good evening. My name is Rich Lemby. My house backs up to the project on Camel Rock, and for the past My house backs up to the project on Camel Rock, and for the past eight years, we've had nothing but disruptive people back there. Last summer, my roommate almost got shot. There were gunshots at the middle of the night, and a bullet hit our house. 10 minutes later, a bullet went through the window two doors down from us. We've had drug use. We've had cars getting stuck back there, motorcycles consistently in the summer, ATVs. It will cause a fire. It will be rampant back there with all the sagebrush, and also would bring, when this project is ready to go, it will bring hundreds of jobs to the local area and the economy that which we need right now. So, as a homeowner, I approve this project, and hopefully you guys will approve it, too. Thank you.
Okay, this is from Alex Woodley. He's a homeowner. Does not wish to make a statement, but I am in favor. His comment is, "I am in favor of Item 7, Sky Vista PUD Amendment. As homeowner adjacent to the property, as I have seen the plans and appreciate the one-story development and buffers at the rear of the property, as a code enforcement officer, I appreciate losing a former dump site that has been a public nuisance for the past several years. The development will be a positive impact, and staff, Nathan Gilbert, has done a great job ensuring it is in compliance." So, that's Alex, and he is in favor of the project. Is there anyone else out there that wishes to speak on this, even the individual that nearly got shot? Speak now or forever hold your peace? Hearing and seeing none? Close the public comment. We're gonna bring it back to the commissioners for questions. Would you like to start?
Mr. Chairman, if I can just ask one question real quickly, and then I'll wait, hold my other questions till the very end. Marilyn, this is for you. Would you please refresh my memory on whether or not we consider financial endeavors by the property owner, the developer, or whomever when we're making these decisions? Because I don't see them in my findings.
You are correct. It is your findings that you evaluate the facts against, and the financial concerns generally are not part of them.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Stapleton?
I just want to follow up on that, because I was wondering that same thing, especially when Nate was saying he couldn't make the findings in terms of conferring, making an exception or making a change to confer a private benefit. I'm not sure I understand how that works and why that's a finding that couldn't be met. And would the private benefit be presumed that it's the financial benefit to the developer by not meeting, by making a change that doesn't, you know, go along with the rest of the PUD? Did I make any sense when I said that? I'm asking, well, Marilyn, if she can answer that, if... But if not, Claudia, I'm asking Claudia.
Relating to the architecture or the landscaping?
So, Nate said he couldn't make the finding without the amendments, because without meeting, I think it was the... Making a change to the setback, that there was no other reason for that besides that that would confer a private benefit upon the applicant? Is that...
Okay, so...
I guess I didn't understand, so I maybe... Yeah, I just want clarification on that.
Okay. So, on the... For the architecture, we look at PUDs as setting... You start with code, and you improve upon that. So, you at least meet code, you meet the landscaping, the setback, the articulation, design, anything like that. So, on the landscaping, we'll start with landscaping, the entire area, as Nathan mentioned, is 20 percent of the rest of the PUD. They've proposed 15 percent, I believe, for this one. 20 percent is the standard that's been set forth for the PUD area. Angela, I wrote down that it's putting in trees to put in trees. Well, that's the standard that's set forth, is this PUD was adopted at 20 percent. The only... We haven't really heard a reason why it would hurt the product, project, to put in 20 percent, other than financial, I think is where she was getting the trees to put in trees, is a financial argument. So, that would be a benefit to the developer, cost-wise. Am I going the right direction?
Okay, yeah, I guess that's the connection I was trying to make.
Am I answering the question? I think the same issue would go with the articulation as well.
Right, I mean, how do we quantify the private benefit? So, it would be that it's on its finding... See in the first set of findings? The findings, the NRS findings?
I don't know if Nathan wants to add to that.
If I could...
I'm just trying to tie in all of those comments together there.
Yeah, yeah. Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. I think code gives an example of PUD differences in PUD, where maybe a setback might be varied in order to provide, you know, allow for clustering, which normally wouldn't be allowed for code to provide for more open space. It allows for variation from code, but it has to have a public benefit.
I see.
Does that make sense? That's the way code explains it with the clustering example.
So, we're not exactly saying that we're... Okay, so the opposite of that is if there's no public benefit, it's something that the developer just wants, and in that case, it's a private benefit to them. Okay, I was just trying to understand that finding better.
So, an example of a public benefit would be if there's a rock outcropping that they're trying to preserve, and that's going to take up that landscaped area, or something like that, that somewhere that whatever they're doing, whatever the solution is, the reason they're doing that is the public benefit.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And I'd like to just piggyback on that. Nathan, I have a question for you. I just want to clarify that the going from 15 to 20 percent isn't necessarily the amount of trees, but it is the amount of open space. Is that correct?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. No, that's required landscaping per code, so that would be trees, shrubs, and manicured landscaping, professionally installed landscaping.
So, the discussion is here is, do you put more trees on the same amount of land, or do you open up more open space within the environment to allow for those trees?
Open space areas could accommodate that. I mean, this is a large site. The original site, the original landscaping plan that they submitted had 20 percent landscaping illustrated on there. I mean, it certainly can be accommodated on the site.
Did the original plan have as many units as it does now?
It had more.
The original plan did?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Nathan, don't sit down. They're requesting 25 percent less parking, right?
Correct.
Which, as a planner in the city, that's not in your conditions, right? So, we're sticking with the required parking?
No, the 20... They requested 25 percent reduction. The existing PUD allows for modifications to park, to standard parking standards, regulations within the PUD with administrator's approval. What they're suggesting, it doesn't need to be a condition of approval, that's what they had submitted in the PUD. Staff does not have an issue with the 25 percent reduction. Their original request had significantly less parking. We were comfortable with the information they provided us with engineering or traffic study, the ITE study, that 25 percent would be a more reasonable reduction in required parking.
Okay.
But it is still subject to your recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wiskey?
For the applicant's representative, please.
Angela, you talked about tying the pathways into the existing pathways of the neighborhoods, yet you talked about putting up solid fences around, except at the main entrance and the emergency. So, how are these going to tie into the existing, and how are your... Is your camera system going to work when you're only putting cameras at the main entrance to see who's driving in and out?
So, on the trail system, we do have a trail system that runs all the way around. It's about a mile-long trail. It then connects on Silver Sky Parkway, which we have to cross and get to the other side of Silver Sky Parkway here to connect into the Sky Vista trail system. So, we've provided a crosswalk right here, so that if you're walking on the trail and want to go in, you can do that.
So, you can... So, the general public can access the trail? They have to do it through the main entrance?
Right. I mean, there's only one way in for pedestrians and vehicles. And so, because it's all privately maintained, you know, that's not part of the Sky Vista HOA maintenance trail system.
Oh, it's not?
No, because nothing... None of the landscaping or open space is going to be maintained by the Sky Vista HOA. That was one of the concerns that the Sky Vista HOA had, is they don't want any more trails or open space to maintain. They're fine if a private developer installs it and maintains it, they have no problem with that.
Okay.
So, how it ties in is, we will develop it, the developer will construct it and maintain it, and then, because this is not a gated entrance, so technically, anyone that wanted to follow that trail system could. When they come into the project, they will be seen on camera, so if there's anything that goes on that maybe, you know, somebody's burgled or something happens, we'll have a record of who came into the project.
Okay. You've got... Tonight, you asked for a change in your setback on the west side, I believe it is, for the parking.
Correct, right there.
That's the same parking you and I talked about, I believe. So, when we talked about it, there was a loop road right there, and we talked about putting some parking in there, so that people coming to visit wouldn't be walking a full length of units to get to the address they're going to.
Right.
What's the setback? Why is the setback reduced, then?
Two reasons. One is initially, we had shown this at 45 feet setback. An error on my part, this has always been 35 feet. So, it should have been 35 feet. That was an error on my part. I have to pick this up, because I can't see that far. But generally, if you look at the overall setback, we've got a 35-foot setback here, 60-foot here, 50-foot here, so 25-foot here. And the reason it's now 25 feet is because we tried to manipulate the site plan to get some more parking, just pods of parking in these areas where we didn't have them before. So, this area in particular, on our previous site plan, was lacking in parking. So, we added about 25 new parking spaces. We tried to do that by not taking away units, but by just rearranging units, not changing what's faced in or faced out, so by keeping the same overall site plan. So, what we did was we took two units, or two buildings here. These were six plexes here, and these were eight plexes here. So, we flopped them. So, instead, these are eight plexes, and these are six plexes.
Okay.
So, we still have the pods of parking. We didn't take any way of parking, but we added about 25 spaces.
So, you worked on the location of it by flipping pods?
Correct. And overall, more parking. Just to piggyback on what Jason was saying, on the landscaping, you know, yes, we had shown more landscaping in a previous site plan. We also have added over 125 parking spaces from our previous site plan. So, there's been a lot of adjustments that have been made that affect the landscaping, affect the parking, affect unit counts. When we've lost units, we've had pods of parking to different locations. You know, yeah, there's a financial side to it, but outside of the financial side to it, there's also a safety issue. And again, we're hearing from the police department that they would actually prefer that we have less landscaping.
I'm glad you said that, because that's my next question. How are you going to address the police department's concern that they can no longer drive down the middle of these buildings and look at the front doors, and they've got areas where they can't get to and observe? And those are areas that you're promoting as being a public area.
Right. This is, again, kind of interesting, you know, I've never seen the police department respond on a project the way they have on this project. They have not returned any of my phone calls, so I haven't had any dialogue with them to talk to them about it. And again, I don't know where it's coming from, because there's projects all over Reno where you have, you know, open space areas all around buildings, and you have alleyways behind buildings. So, I don't know why this project is so unique to any other project that they reviewed and not commented on, but I can tell you, you know, within the same Sky Vista development, there's the apartment project, the Sky Vista Commons, and they have, you know, similar site designs, same as like a garden apartment project, where it's three or four stories, where you have open space, you know, landscaped areas around buildings, where people could commit crime and go in there and hide. That's never been bought up as an issue. That project has been there for 10 years. They have never had a problem with calling the cops and criminals hiding in those areas. I'm a little unclear why now they're telling us that it's going to be a huge problem, when, again, this is the way development happens all the time, where you have landscaped and open space areas around buildings that they can't drive into. Little unclear as to what makes this project so different from their perspective. But again, we will put surveillance cameras at the main entrance here, and of course, at the emergency exit entrance there. So, if anyone comes in or leaves, they'll be caught on camera.
Last question from me for now. The articulation and the straight-line roof line, why?
The main reason is that no one's going to see it. You know, when you talk about the public interest...
But if you drive in there, or I drive in there, and it's a public street, we're going to see it, right?
And it's not a public street. These are private alleyways. The only person who's going to be in there is who's going to be driving into their garage, where they will go inside the garage and close the door.
So, everything is public, everything is private inside, once you turn inside and enter that road?
Correct. So, again, if you can see any of these areas, we're fine with articulating them. But if you cannot see any of these areas, we're saying, let's not articulate those areas, because there's no purpose, if no one's going to see it. If you're going to drive down your private alleyway and pull into your garage and close your garage, because again, there's no parking within the alleyway, there's no sidewalks within the alleyway, you know, we have separate trash enclosure areas, so there should be no reason that you'll have to walk in the alleyway. And even if you do walk in the alleyway, it's 20 feet. You're not going to be able to see any of this articulation. So, let's put it on the areas where you can see it, and not on the areas where you can't.
Thank you. That's all for now. Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Stapleton?
I have a couple of questions, and Angela, I just want to follow up on the question that Commissioner Wiskey just asked before, the one about the articulation, about the police concerns about safety between buildings. And I know that that's something that they have sort of started to address more recently. And I can speak to the fact that I do think that that can be a concern. I, you know, I see both sides of this. I, you know, in my meeting with the applicants, I, you know, we talked about, you know, this vision of having this common community space. I like that idea, I think it might work, but I think you have to do that right to make sure that it's a safe space. So, the fact that you're going to have people facing in towards this space, I think, makes it more safe, because you've got more eyes on it, you know, you've got more interaction. At the same time, I see the argument about the landscaping to where if you've got a lot of trees and bushes, I think that could be an issue. So, I think I agree with the police's comments, but I'm not sure... I'm not sure how you fix that.
And I think there are ways to fix it.
That's not a question.
There's something called, okay, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, which is basically what we're talking about.
Right.
It's lighting, it's landscaping, it's location. So, there are ways to get around that. We make sure these areas are lit, and we make sure that landscaping is low on trebery and high on where the trees actually come up with leaves, so it makes it harder for people to actually hide in there. So, I think there are techniques and tools that you can use, and these are all approved through the police department. It's a national, you know, system. It's...
Is that what was suggested in that letter? Or was it just reduced landscaping that was suggested? I didn't...
I have not seen the letter that was given out last night.
Nate's standing behind you, so I think he...
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner.
Thanks, Angela.
Specifically, it says, "Example of project layout shows landscaping at the end of the proposed alleyways that allow residents to access their garage. This will create issues, as vehicles will have to enter and exit at the same alley entrance. Removal of landscaping at the end of the alleyway and redesign so that vehicles may exit from opposite end of alleyway that they entered." So, specifically with landscaping, their comment was just at the end of the alleyways.
Okay, how about between the... How about between the...
No comment from the PD.
Oh, okay. I have a question, and this may be for Marilyn. How this works, if you guys mentioned that the developer was going to own this, and then it was going to be, you know, rental project, and then with the option in the future to turn it into condos for individual owners, so at that point, what happens? I don't know if this is in HOA laws, or if it would have to be put into the PUD in terms of who then provides maintenance, if all of these get sold to individual condo owners, or would there... Do you have to put something in the PUD to ensure that there's going to be a condo, you know, owners of... be a condo, you know, owners association at that point, or is it...
Yeah, so as part of the final, as part of the final map process, they will have to do CCNRs, and so they'll be able to address maintenance, long-term maintenance. Because we have one owner owning all of them, he'll be able to control, you know, the CCNRs. So if he starts selling individual units, the CCNRs would still apply, and that happens at the final map stage. That gets recorded, the CCNRs will get recorded with, when the final map gets recorded.
So at that point, is there something written in there that requires the creation of some sort of an HOA or condo association, to make sure that some, that there is someone to be responsible when the current owner then turns it over?
Correct. And then there's, you know, a process put into place for fees, and who does what, and how that's all done.
Okay. Oh, and can you just, how, how much parking is there per unit, and what was the idea behind the request for parking, reduction in parking?
Yep, so parking right now, we have six hundred and eighty-eight spaces. That's a ratio of two spaces per unit. Based on the ITE manual, which is, again, the standard that you use for parking, a low-rise apartment has one point two spaces per unit. And again, we're at two point oh.
Are those...
Sorry. If you're a rental town home or condo, one point seven-three parking spaces per unit.
So are those, are the garages, two-car garages or one-car garages?
Single-car garages.
Single-car garages, and then the parking spaces?
Additional parking.
I get it. Okay. Okay, those are all my, oh, one last question about the storage.
Yes, so the way that that community garden area, recreation area has been set aside is, there's buildings right here, so what we'd like to do, and these are, these are just actual, you know, residential units, so this whole area will be fenced, and we'll have the ability to lock it and keep it fenced during evening hours, so that we don't have any criminal activity going on back there. Generally speaking, we could put some tenant storage area here, and we're not talking RVs, or cars, or anything like that. We're talking a place where you can put your skis, extra boxes, things that you would typically store in your garage. So we're not talking big items. And so it would be, you know, each unit would have an assigned space with a key that they could access.
I guess my concern is that it be storage that doesn't get or look cluttered, if this happens, and I'm not even sure how I feel about the storage idea, but that there's something in the PUD so that the storage is all enclosed, it's not, it's not...
Internally.
You know, it's metal or wood siding, and it's not, you know, to where you can see through it.
Right.
I don't really know a lot about that, that's just my thought on storage.
Yeah, no, and again, the idea was to have an enclosed storage area, so it's not something that would be...
And maybe that's something we could put into the PUD.
Right.
That's all the questions I have for now. Thanks, Angela.
Commissioner Woosley.
Thank you. Nathan, have questions? Nathan?
When we were talking about the police department and the closed-circuit TV, do you believe that their intentions with that were to have more than two just at the fire exit and the main entrance?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, again, I just received this, it came to us last night, I was not able to speak with an officer regarding that. My read of it, it seems sufficient that, given that the constrained access points, that they're, they're concerned, their recommended mitigation of closed-circuit monitoring at the, at the entrance and emergency access would be sufficient. But I, but I'm, again, I haven't spoken with them, I'm just basing that on my reading of their, their comments.
And we don't have a representative tonight?
We do not.
Gotcha. Thank you. Question for Bill, I believe it's about traffic.
So this is not, I know, there's an idea that there may be a lot of senior living here, but it's not age-restrictive at the moment. Correct. So with all the traffic studies with in and out of one access, and let's just say you assumed that there were no seniors, and you have daily trips, do you, do you count that the same, whether or not it's senior or not? For the record, Bill Goll, Senior Engineer, there was a traffic study done on this, well, traffic trip generation done on this, this proposal, and it was based on number of units as townhomes, you know, or condos. So that's, that's the use that they had. So it wasn't an age-restricted use when they developed the, the traffic count. And then they compared that to the existing proposal, which was the two schools, a twelve-hundred student middle school and a six-hundred student elementary school. And the trip generations, in all cases, the ADT, the AM, and the PM, peak hour trips were all less than those proposed, or accepted in the, in the original proposal with the schools, the two school sites. So at that point, we accepted without additional studies on that.
And the fire department did not have concern about the single main entrance?
I'm not going to speak for fire directly, although I do know that I, myself and, and fire met with the applicants prior to their application to go over the site and, and the plan, and what they needed to see in that, at that time as well. So I, I don't know what the fire comments were, and Nathan may be able to fill you on that.
Thank you. Question for applicant?
So there are a lot of things that I do like about this project. Some things concern me, and that were noted tonight, and that is parking and parking location. I do agree with you, I applaud the, the increase in parking spaces. I, I am a little concerned about where they're located and, and ease of access around, especially if this is even intended for, for all ages. And I know you're restricted by, by units, and I, in my head, I'm trying to shift things around, and I can't, because it is, it is very dense.
It's a bit like Jenga.
It is very dense, and I just wanted to hear from you, that is your restriction from putting more pods, maybe smaller pods of parking around the community?
And there are areas where we could add additional parking, if parking's an issue. I mean, for instance, you know, if there was, this area here could be, more parking could be added. Some of these open space areas just around the site could be changed. It was an easy fix when we said, let's swap these units with some of these units, and it opened up twenty-five more spaces of parking. So again, when I say it's like Jenga, it's because it's like a puzzle, you move things around, and it completely changes everything. So there's the ability to add more parking. You know, the parking calculations that we have provided show that we have ample parking. If we use the parking calculations based on city code for multifamily apartments or condominium project, we're actually overparked. Because this is a condo project, meaning it's final mapped, and they're considering this more of a townhome project rather than a condo project, we fall under a different zoning parking calculation category. You know, and again, we compared it to the ITE manual, and what's, what's normal for parking on a project like this? We compared it to the apartment project down the street, you know, the Sky Vista Commons, and they have a parking ratio of about two point oh. That's also an apartment project that was later converted to condos, so they're similar in terms of that. So two point oh parking spaces per unit is actually a pretty high number in terms of multifamily, condo, and the ITE manual. If you feel that there's areas that we need to add more parking, you know, in terms just maybe not changing the parking number, but changing the location, we can definitely look at that before we get to final map.
And I think, like I said, I applauded the, the increased parking, and I think it was just more the location, it's not necessarily the number. But, you know, that is something to, it's just an observation.
Yeah.
And then, one last question with the, the trees and the shrubbery. I mean, even if, I understand, looking at this, putting more trees in some of the interior areas doesn't make sense, but maybe it makes sense along the outer edge, and I wanted to hear your thoughts on...
On the perimeter?
On the perimeter, of adding more trees there.
There's, there's areas where we could add more trees. And again, it goes back to, is it going to look out of place if we have, you know, just pockets of trees lining this, this, this project? I don't know, it depends on how you feel about landscaping. Does it fit in with the, the open space landscaping within the rest of Sky Vista? Absolutely. Because we have so much development in terms of building and, you know, pavement, it's deceiving how much room there is to actually put trees and shrubs. We could add more trees in some of these areas, does it, do you feel that it serves a purpose in doing that? Or are we just trying to meet a twenty percent, just to meet a twenty percent requirement?
I understand the question. Thank you.
Commissioner Locke, Angela, don't sit down. I'm concerned about that corner piece.
Okay.
This one up here. You know, it is very high density, and I would say, you know, why not scratch the storage unit idea, and, and do some of your percentage over there? You know, add some trees there, but open that up for people, and, you know, don't add more buildings to something that already has a bazillion buildings.
Yeah, and I...
That would be a suggestion on my part.
Yeah, and we're looking at, like I said, this area is about thirty thousand square feet, so it's a pretty big piece of property. The idea was to put some tenant storage areas here, and that would be an enclosed, I was just talking to the applicant, you know, he wants it to be a nice building that looks like the rest of the project. It's all internal, you go in, you go into your locker space where you have your own designated tenant storage area. So from the outside, it looks like a normal building. That then also leaves all of this area here for community gardening, for picnicking. Again, we do want to make sure that this is kept empty at night, we don't want more issues with nuisance.
And what's the fencing like? Just one more time right there, sorry.
Yeah, so this will be your standard six-foot solid fence all through here, and then it will be cut off around here, and then it will be gated. And because it's, you know, privately maintained, there'll be somebody that can actually go and lock it every night and reopen it every day.
And it'll be sort of like grass and trees?
Yeah, you know, it hasn't actually, we're calling it just a passive recreation area. So because initially, it was going to be a dog park area, there was a lot of plans there for dog equipment, you know, and areas for dogs to run around, so it wasn't going to be grass. But because now it's going to be more of a passive use, there's options there to develop into something special.
And there's no gates in or out, obviously, right there?
Well, there, there'll be a pedestrian gate, just to enter it.
Okay. Same height?
The six-foot, right, the six-foot solid fence.
Can I, can I follow up on that one?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Locke? Thank you. So this passive recreation area, it looks like there's no landscaping whatsoever.
Yeah, and again, because when, this project has morphed as we've talked to homeowners, as we also held a neighborhood meeting in late December, so we've got more input since then. So initially, it was going to be a dog park area.
Right.
We didn't want to put a land, a lot of landscaping in there, because it was going to be torn up with, with dogs and activity. So now that we've decided to move the dog park area to here, this opens it up for future development, not of construction development, but again, for like picnic area or community garden area, that's, if there are seniors living here, that's something that they may be interested in, is having their own little plot of land to, you know, grow fruits and vegetables. So it's, it's in the handbook as passive recreation and a community garden area and future storage for tenants.
So it's just going to be a fence and dirt behind it for now?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was getting at. And the dog park, is that going to be, is it going to be lawn?
No. And again, because dogs ruin lawn, it'll probably be more some type of D and G, and then we'll have some equipment in there, some like dog obstacle course equipment.
I'm not a dog owner, so I don't know what usually the requirements are in a dog park.
And that will also be fenced, and we'll have a double gate, so that you can go in safely with your dog and not be, you know, attacked by all the other dogs. You can kind of slowly...
Is there, can there be some commitment to do something with that dirt piece, either as, you know, landscaping, or depending on how the other commissioners feel about this, that it will be turned into something, some passive recreation area or something, that there can be some commitment in a certain timeframe, that it won't just end up being dirt behind a fence without landscaping?
Right, and, and the applicant was actually very excited about making it a dog park initially. You know, it would've been a great amenity to the project. But now that it's going to be more of a passive recreation, that opens it up for opportunity. So it could be an issue of, if you want to condition it so that it's, you know, we put something in the handbook that makes sure it's either developed with, you know, landscaping or something, so that it's not in its natural vegetative state at all times, you know, maybe we could work on that, or you just want to make sure it doesn't become...
Yeah, I guess it depends on how the other commissioners feel about this, but right now, it's just dirt behind a fence, and you're calling it passive recreation, but it just sounds to me like it's something that you haven't determined what's the use going to, you know, so...
Correct, yeah.
So I'm just saying that if, if it gets approved and there's no set sort of plan for that area, it could just stay like that forever. So that was my only concern, that there be some sort of long-term plan, or just something in the PUD saying, you know, that if you don't figure out what to do within a couple of years, you'll landscape it or something.
Yeah, and it could be an issue of, you know, the idea of a community garden sounds great, but maybe nobody wants to maintain a community garden, so maybe we scrap that idea and do something else that they would rather see. Maybe it's, you know, bocce ball, or something more on, on that scale.
I'll, I mean, I'll let, see if any other commissioners agree with that, if there should be anything, some sort of time limit on that. I don't know. Thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
I have some.
Go ahead. I'll wait till you're done.
Okay. The original PUD handbook for this development is from nineteen ninety-four?
Correct.
Okay. And that, at that time, in nineteen ninety-four, it specified twenty percent for landscaping?
So each village, as we call it, is allowed to stipulate their landscaping within the PUD handbook. So for this particular village, we've asked for fifteen percent.
Okay, but in ninety, nineteen ninety-four, could they have asked for fifteen percent in nineteen ninety-four?
Right.
Could they have asked for twenty-five percent?
Oh, you know, I'd have to, I'd have to look, I can pull up the table and see if they'd ask for anything different than twenty percent.
Okay, well, I'm just curious, because that's, it seems to be, we're using this as an arbitrary number, and I think the overall concept is more important than the exact number of trees and shrubs. I think Commissioner Woosley made a good point, that sometimes less is actually better, because it gives that impression of openness.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question off of that?
Absolutely.
For clarification. What's the difference in the number of trees? I, I know you gave it to me before, Angela, but what's the difference in the actual number of trees from fifteen percent to twenty percent?
So fifteen percent is seven hundred and eight trees, and twenty percent is nine hundred and forty-four trees. So about a hundred and thirty? Commissioner Romeo, let me get back to you on the...
Not, not a problem, I've got more questions. The traffic study that was done is going, again, back to the tra, maybe Paul, you're there, but that was based on the traffic that would have been generated on these roads for the school?
Correct, for two schools, and that would have generated...
For two schools.
Do you want to speak to that? Okay. So for two schools, that would have generated about nineteen hundred and forty-four average daily trips. We're generating about eighteen hundred and ninety-four average daily trips, so less than. The big difference really is in your peak trips, because of school you're dropping off and picking up.
Morning and afternoon.
So with a school, you had about nine hundred and eighteen AM peak hour trips, whereas we have about a hundred and forty AM peak hour trips, significantly less peak hour trips. And less overall trips, but definitely much more on the peak hour trips.
I get that. And then the articulation, what you're saying on this is that anything that's seen on the perimeter or from another property is going to see the articulation as stipulated or as what is required?
Right, so based on the way the handbook is written, is that this, this diagram is actually in the handbook, that stipulates that these five rows of buildings will have a hundred percent articulation, meaning articulation on all sites. And the rest of the project, again, because you can't see those areas, the rear elevations will not be the hundred percent articulated. The fronts, all the fronts will be a hundred percent, all the sides will be, you know, articulated. So these are the only buildings that you can see from any different point, that we thought would have, you know, a window view, or an adjacent property view, or I'm driving down a street and I can see, you know, I can see the rear elevation, because it's not fronting, I'm sorry, it's not backing another back.
So anyone that would, you would have to live there to not have the view of the articulation, if you could, looking up on your driveway going into your garage?
You're talking about these guys?
No, inside the project.
Internally.
Where they're not, where they're not going to be done, the only place where you wouldn't see that, or they're not being done, is if you're driving down the driveway to go into your garage?
Right, down your alleyway.
Right, down your alleyway, and again, all, the backs of the buildings, because they face each other, they are separated by a twenty-foot alleyway, as we're calling it. This is the whole, the whole project, you know, is private, so these aren't public roads. So, for instance, if you're back here, the only person who's going to be back here is pulling into their garage. The only person who's going to be back here is the person who's pulling into their garage. These, this is a front here, so if these neighbors look out their back window and want to see what's going on behind the fence, this is a front. So even these neighbors aren't seeing anything.
Okay.
What, what about that one right there where you were just pointing?
This one?
No, down, that one right there.
This, this is also a front, and this is also a front.
And is that back going to be articulated?
And so this is a rear, so as you pull into the project, if you're going here, you'll pull into these properties here. And so these ones will not be articulated in the back.
But they will be in the front, because that would be visible from the...
Correct, so the sides will be articulated and the fronts will be articulated.
Seems to me that some of those you could still, you could see from outside of that project, some of those backs, especially right there where the one we were just...
From here?
Yeah, from, from right at the top where, where your pen is, right there, yeah, looking in, that you could see some of those backs that weren't articulated.
So, are you thinking like these units, or...
Yeah, yeah, those there. And, and is this site recessed a little bit?
Yes.
Is this site, so that the surrounding subdivisions are looking down, so they'll see this?
So these guys, yep, I mean, they'll see a front, they won't see a back.
But they're, looking down, they'll see?
If you can see over somebody's house onto the other side, you mean?
I guess that's what I'm asking, isn't this whole site recessed a little bit?
Several feet.
So that's, oh, several feet, so it's not enough to where the surrounding subdivisions are going to be looking into it and seeing these roof lines?
Right, and there's areas, for instance, here where it's pretty much even, and that's where our emergency evacuation is. So this is more, off the top of my head, I think it was more like three or four feet, these guys behind us are above us about three or four feet. These guys, I think, are slightly higher than that, and again, it kind of depends on where you're at.
Right, so it's not a lot, I mean, I guess what I'm getting at, it seems like some of the other commissioners too, is, you know, what you're asking for, it sounds like a pretty big exception, you know, if to anybody else on the outside, you know, without any articulation, it looks like mini storage, not apartments, you know what I mean? So, so, you know, I think it is important that you really, really, you know, to make sure that no one can see it.
Still, still in questions?
So, yes, sorry.
Okay.
So what, Angela, Commissioner Wozley, what happens with the ridge lines? Because in your elevations, you showed us ridge lines were all a straight line.
The, the elevations...
Articulation on a ridge line, even for the units...
Just across the site?
Across the site, or, or on, on Silver Sky?
Mm-hmm.
Those ridge lines are all going to still be a straight line? There's going to be no articulation in them?
Because it's single-story, and has to be ADA compliant, it's a federal regulation because the type of project it is...
That's how, that's what happens on the ground.
Makes it all flat.
And we can go, we can go look at housing tracks all over with single-story houses who have different articulations in the ridge lines, the tops of the roofs.
So from...
Just by ordering different trusses, you get different heights out of them.
Okay.
So that's part of the articulation also. See how that's a straight line going across the top of the building?
Right, right. You're talking here?
Just by buying a different truss, you change the rake of the roof and you create an articulation in there. You create a different view. And I think that's part of the concern that I heard, I know it is, that part of the concern I heard from Nathan earlier, is that straight ridge line for those units, how can that be broken up? That's my question.
As a whole, for the entire project?
At least from what can be seen from the streets.
Yeah, and again, everything that can be seen from the streets is going to be a front, and the fronts do have articulation, let me get my color one out. So this is a front elevation here, so we have these pop-ups added in between, we also have these in between, and we have our faux chimneys in between. There's a slight break in some of these units between, you know, like here. So that will also help to break it up. And so again, this is what you're going to see if you're driving by, between the fifty feet of landscaping, between Silver Sky Parkway and the first set of buildings.
Okay. So if you have that articulation on a front elevation, why is it such a problem to add some of that articulation to a rear elevation?
And I know you don't want to hear this, but it's a huge cost, and for what purpose? The question is, who benefits? Who's going to see it? Even if you're looking for it, is there enough room to actually see what's going on on the roof line?
We do the same thing with multimillion-dollar shopping centers in this community, and we make them articulate the backs which are truckwells.
And I think if there's any way that it's visible from any view, you know, if you're driving, Summit Sierra is a great example, I don't think they required initially that there was rear articulation, but then after it was built, and people actually were driving on the freeway, they could see the rear articulation and say, wait a minute, you know, that doesn't comply. This is different, because it's all internal, there's no public streets around us, everything's already developed around us, so we know what's there. Everything inside the project has been designed so that, again, backs face back, so that they don't have public views from either outside the project or even within the project.
Okay, thank you. No more questions, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Guess we're out of questions, so let's come back for comments, discussion here. What is the feeling? Let's, Jason, you want to start?
Sure.
Commissioner Wozley?
I think when we were talking earlier about that, the open space, that the bit of space that there is, I mean, I know right now that's undecided of what that's going to be. I did like the idea of putting some kind of criteria on it, if it, you know, I, I see an opportunity there to add more trees, maybe not necessarily in the center, because you can keep it open for some kind of park or something to do something in, but lining it with trees on the outside, you know, is an idea, may not get you up to the full twenty percent, but it's, it's something, but unless there's another concept for that, and maybe leaving it open into, to something, something happening with that area, I'd hate to see it left just as dirt. And I know that's not the intention, but you never know. And I would like to, to kind of discuss this, everybody's feeling on the parking density and slash articulation of what's going on, and kind of get a comfort level from everybody on what we have, because it seems like all of us have some concerns.
If you don't mind, Commissioner Wozley, I'll, I'll take that. First of all, Angela, I would like to compliment you on the considerations for parking and moving locations around, moving some pods around, that's what we talked about, so that there was more balanced parking. It wasn't the overall number. I'm satisfied with, with the numbers that I see for parking spaces, including parking garages, it was a location, and I, and I compliment you on your efforts for that. That was a concern that I had when I met with Angela a week and a, week ago, and, and that's where the moving of some of the pods came from, because I thought parking location was inadequate. I feel the numbers are, are better than what we asked for, they may not be what is, is being looked for, but an apartment complex, we certainly have more centralized location parking now, and I'm, I'm in favor of that, and I'm, I'm grateful for what they did.
Can I just clarify, you are comfortable with the locations of...
I, I am very comfortable with the locations now, the way they were before, I told Angela I, I wouldn't, I'd have a hard time making findings because I didn't think it was adequately laid out. Articulation, I still have a little issue with, but, and it's for front-facing, but we'll, we're talking about parking right now, when we start on articulation, I'll go for it.
I'm comfortable with parking, except I, I think that one section where you had to lower the setback to get to squeeze the parking in, I, I mean, I think that there could be some other accommodation made there, I mean, I don't know if, you know, it's obviously between the number of units and the parking and the setback, you know what I mean? So, you know, it's, it comes back to that finding, are we going to be able to make, you know? Is it, you know, are we asking for this change in the PUD just because we don't want to reduce the number of units to put the parking in and, you know, to increase that setback there to what we want? So I have an issue with that, but besides that, I'm comfortable with the parking.
Any other comments on the parking? All right, let's jump into the articulation, that seems to be one of the issues. I, I wouldn't mind going...
All right, I seem to be asking the questions and, and seem, seem to be the one kind of making a stand on it. I believe that the front elevations could be articulated a little better. I don't like the solid or near-solid straight line of the ridge. The roof ridge, to me, represents any one of the forty or fifty storage unit complexes that we have around town, which are not well-articulated, and they look like straight flat lines. We can go into senior complexes that have been built around town in different areas, north, south, east or west, and there's different roof articulations in them. Apartment buildings have different roof articulations in them. It's a matter of buying out some trusses. We're not talking about that many units. The units on the inside, it's private, it's not a public street, and they are the, the backs of the houses, I, I could probably look the other way on that and, and be in favor of articulation, but the way it's being proposed right now, I have a hard time with that ridge line. Because I think it's an easy fix.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to jump in here too. Articulation on a building is typically thought of as public outside, on all four sides, or three sides. In this case, everything that's done from the public viewer from the outside is done, actually very well, in my opinion, as far as articulation goes. I don't see any benefit gained by doing backsides of roof lines or putting anything on there that serves no purpose whatsoever. It doesn't enhance the property, doesn't enhance the visual, and it doesn't enhance the project itself. Everything that's seen from the outside, the development, and when you come in on the entrance, I believe the buildings that are included in that have the proper articulation, so I don't, I don't have an issue with that. I think this is, each development has to stand on its own merit, and I think what we're dealing with here is not one large building that we're talking about articulation, or one two-hundred-thousand-square-foot strip mall that we need to deal with articulation. We're literally dealing with dozens of buildings, broken up with landscaping in between, that have different articulations, different, they're set in different ways, and I think that's what the key is. Is the intent met? I think it is. Is the letter met? Possibly not. Because I think the interpretation would be there, it would be no different than a center courtyard in a building where you had articulation around, but you had a courtyard in the middle. You didn't, you would not require the articulation in that courtyard. Therefore, I don't see why you would require that articulation on the backsides of buildings not visible from the public. So that's my two cents on articulation.
I'll give two cents, I promised it'll be, promised it'll be just two. I think part of the issue though here is that we have to make this finding, and that it has to be, that there has to be some public reasoning while, while we're making some, there has to be some reason why we're, that why we're making this exception that benefits the public. So that's that, you know, Nate's, that, that staff put on there, the Amendment B, requiring them to meet the articulation, because he couldn't make that finding, and I don't think we could make that finding either unless we can determine that there's some public benefit. I agree with Dennis on the, I'm okay with the backsides not having the articulation, but I do think that the buildings, these are long buildings, and that they should be required to meet the proper articulation on those fronts.
Commissioner Lox?
So as it stands, they don't meet articulation on the front?
I believe they do.
They do.
Am I correct, Nathan?
So we're just asking for more, or better?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, there, the way code describes it, there's two times of, two types of articulation, vertical and horizontal, the, the front is certainly well-articulated, however, the vertical plane, that's your vertical articulation, is not met in any, in, on any of them except for the sides. So we're talking front and rear, the vertical, we're talking the roof line, that's not meeting vertical, it's not meeting code.
I am not comfortable with that. I think that it should meet articulation.
You're saying the fronts don't meet code?
The, the, the vertical.
The front does not meet code for vertical articulation, for the roof line.
Really?
Let me question then, so when we have, and this is for you, Nathan, too, when we have these areas, again, this is the front, where it's straight and it pops up, straight and it pops up, does, how does that not meet the vertical articulation requirement? It's not, you know, a long plane of nothing, there is articulation popped up based on the, the calculation that we have to provide, every seventeen feet has to pop up, two and a half feet, whatever the calculation was. We thought when we put this together, that this actually met that, because again, we pop up, straight, we pop up and it's straight. So in our opinion, it does meet it.
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, we did ask for those specifications and did not receive them from the applicant. When staff evaluated the elevations, just based on the scale, I mean, there's a formula, it's a set formula, does it meet code or not? I mean, it does not.
So it doesn't, it doesn't meet code because you didn't get the specifications, or...
Staff's evaluation did, did not indicate that it, that it meant the code, but if the applicant disagrees, we did request that we got the, the numbers from them as well, we did, we did not receive them. But staff's evaluation for vertical articulation, again, it's a formula, but it doesn't meet it.
These are the elevations that are in your handbook, so again, you know, we thought that we met code when we revised the articulation, put them in the revised handbook, submitted to staff, and again, it, we, we felt it met the distance and the pop-out requirement.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wozley?
Question for Nathan, is, Nathan? Are typically our, our chimneys considered articulation?
Not typically, no, I mean, typically, we're talking about variations.
Are they, are they considered articulation in our ordinance, or...
Per, per the code, they could be. There, there's, I mean, it's essentially a rise-over-run type of, type of equation. I mean, it's, it's a cert, for every certain amount of length and, of length, there needs to be a certain amount of variation in height. We can take that cumulatively, but the, the faux chimneys as, as presented there, we, the measurements don't add up as, for, for meeting the vertical articulation. It certainly meets horizontal articulation in the front, but we're talking about two levels of articulation, vertical and horizontal. So the, the faux chimneys were added to, to try to accommodate that, but again, you know, our, our analysis doesn't, it, it doesn't add up as far as the, the measurements go, and we haven't received any, many calculations that would say otherwise.
Okay, thank you. Angela? Do you have calculations for the chimneys and the articulation that you have in that front elevation? You have some false dormers up on, in between your chimneys, it looks like?
Right, so this bottom line here shows the distance, so between this area here, you know, seventeen point six, nineteen feet, I can't read that far, twenty-six feet, and then as far as pop-out distance, this refers to the height of how far it goes up, so our building is seventeen point six, pops up to twenty point six, here it pops up to nineteen point six.
Okay, and when you, when you look, if you pull that photograph down just a little bit, you've got at the very top articulated rear elevation, and you can, you can kind of see where your dormer ridge line is between your, right there, yes, thank you.
So again, it's the same, it's the same distance, so from here to here...
But we don't, but we don't know exactly what those dimensions are, and we don't know if it fits the formula proposed by code, correct? Do you agree with that?
And our interpretation...
That's what Nathan is saying?
Right.
He doesn't have that information to verify that, correct?
In our interpretation, when we did the math, was that this is how we were able to meet the articulation?
Okay.
The vertical articulation.
So at this time, how are we supposed to... So at this time, how are we supposed to know if we were to accept this that it meets code and it meets, and, and staff can verify? I mean, I'm, and believe me, I'm not, you know, questioning you. I'm not questioning Nathan. I'm saying, there's a formula that we're, we're all supposed to have, you're supposed to provide in order to move forward on it. Go ahead, Fred.
Thank you. Through the Chair, Fred Turner, Community Development Director. What I would ask, Claudia and I are kind of looking at each other, trying to ask each other some questions, and maybe we could take five minutes just to go back and, and take a look at this to get you the answer whether we can make that determination right now or we can't.
Thank you. That's where I was.
We can do that.
Two minutes behind you.
Based on the information that's provided, we can.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion right now to take a ten-minute break and let staff get together with the applicant.
And I think this is critical, because I was under the understanding that the front articulation was in compliance and the back was not. So this is, in my opinion, this is huge. So we're gonna take, is ten minutes enough?
It's fine, thank you.
Ten-minute break. All right, let's call this meeting back to order. And what is the grand result from the multiple calculations that were done? I don't think you're, the mic's not on.
Sorry. There's about a two-inch difference on the chimneys that we need to make up for and about a one foot, what do we say, one point three, four feet on the gabled dormers. So not a problem, that if you want to, however you want to word that, it will comply with code. The front elevation, vertical and horizontal, will comply with code. It was a math error, so it now meets code.
Okay, does that answer everybody's? So we, if we were to say that the fronts have to meet the articulation standard, that would cover it?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. That the existing condition B just says to meet standard, standard code. So if you wanted to specify which, which areas that would apply to, that would be appropriate.
Okay. All right, thank you. And that answers the question we've all been wondering about. Any other comments or questions or concerns or whatever?
Landscaping.
Go ahead.
Landscaping.
That was landscape. It's getting late now.
They're either, you know, meet twenty percent or stay at where they are. But the other thing, the other question, that one corner section, I think that needs to be specific as to what that is. I mean, I lost my thingy.
And for the record, the applicant has no problem. If you want to put in some, you know, if, if we can talk about something that works for him and works for you guys, he has no problem landscaping that area, whether it's adding additional trees. I mean, trees actually make sense around the buffer, I'm sorry, around the perimeter between the adjacent property owners. So we're open to some dialogue and putting something in the handbook to address that.
What's the score, what's the square footage of that triangle?
It's about thirty thousand square feet.
And if that was landscape, where would that bring you as far as the percentage?
It would be almost a six percent, yeah.
So I believe it was calculated, that square footage was calculated as part of the overall landscape acreage. If we need to add more trees to meet the seven hundred and eight to nine hundred and four, or, you know, if we need more trees in that area, we could put more trees in that area to up our number of trees. But I believe, I'm almost positive, because it's shown in green on the landscape plan, that it was included as part of the overall landscaping.
Then shouldn't it have required landscaping on it? I mean, shouldn't it have that same perimeter buffer that the rest of the site has?
It would, it would, right, it would, it would make sense. And again, you know, it's, it's, it abuts the backs of homes. So it doesn't make sense to have a lot of shrubs there because no one's going to see it, but it would definitely make sense to have trees along there.
So why don't we bring that out of the no man's land and into the plan and just extend the perimeter? You know, maybe Nate would be a better person to ask this to. I don't know what staff would suggest. If this little triangle of the site was included with the rest of the plan, what kind of perimeter landscaping buffer would be required there?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. That the, well, the way the PUD reads is that there is a given, that the given setbacks are landscaped. So that would include that little pocket, at least from the perimeter perspective.
So why don't we at least include the regular setback buffer landscaping that Nate just talked about? And with the requirement that the rest within two years is somehow some use that the developers decide on, is built in there? And if not after two years, it has to be somehow, you know, DG or, I don't, I don't know. It has to just be not dirt or is that reasonable? I don't know. What do the other commissioners think?
I, I would agree, and I think that we need to take the, we need to actually specify trees around the perimeter, not just shrubs, like you were saying, and, and then call for some kind of landscape. You want to leave it open for them to have different ideas for there, but it is, it is to be used, maybe to each designate it as the open space instead of giving the opportunity to put storage on there. Or, you know, you'd hate to, or, you know, people trying to park boats. And I know that's not their intention, it's just if we're gonna clarify it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for applicant representative Angela. On that triangular piece in the corner, first of all, I believe when you and I met, you said that this was probably going to be a multi-phased project?
Two phases.
Okay, so can you kind of show everybody the lines that you showed me for, that you thought, you know, and we're not going to hold you to it, but approximately what phase one might be, what phase two might be?
Right. Generally, it follows, there's an overhead power line that runs through the site and that runs from here through here. So they wanted to include this in phase one and then basically this section, and of course, your main access road. So that would ideally be what will be developed first.
Okay.
And then this portion over here.
Okay, so that triangular piece should be in phase one?
Correct.
So if tonight, we condition that phase one, that is included in phase one and that is to be left up, we'll leave it up to staff review to accept the landscaping in that area with their submission of phase one drawings, would you have a problem with that?
I think, no, that would be fine.
Nathan, from a staff point of view, would you have a problem if we leave the discretion up to staff to review that for landscaping? There, there's no way they're going to put a hundred and twenty trees in there and make up the difference to get to twenty percent. But it needs to be landscaped. If it had some trees in it, it would help block, you know, some privacy for the adjacent neighbors. You guys can look at that discretionary and that's work it out. Claudia, would you have?
We can, that, yes, to answer your question, yes, is the short answer. With a clarification that, there was discussion also that it might be storage or DG or that's not landscaping.
Right.
I mean, if it's gonna be, and if the landscaping's part of their fifteen percent and it ends up being something else, they're not going to even meet their fifteen percent if they end up not landscaping that area.
Okay, so they, so they have.
That's my concern.
So then we, it needs to be documented that it, you know, phase one, all their landscaping in phase one must meet a minimum of fifteen percent, which is their request. Then that would cover it. If they decide to put storage in there and all of a sudden their landscaping's at thirteen percent, they have to in phase one come up with another two percent landscaping or they don't, they don't meet their special use, their request, right? So.
Correct.
Okay, so is that, is that reasonable for, for us to pin that on staff and to request staff to do that? Are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
We can do that.
Thank you. Commissioners, you okay with that? Now I just have to figure out what I said so we can.
Wouldn't you, wouldn't you assume that the density so far to meet the fifteen percent is closely depicted on the picture now? So if we went ahead and did the perimeter or the rest, that would at least get it up to seventeen percent or? So you'd hold them?
No, I believe that the entire triangle she said was already included in that fifteen percent.
It's the tree count that'll be off, Jason.
So there's acreage and tree count. So acreage, we're looking at four point nine acres is fifteen percent. And then the tree count number, I think, was seven hundred and eight. So maybe what we're looking at is the overall acreage is still, you know, the five acres, but the tree count is higher than fifteen percent. Maybe that's, like you said, maybe, you know, because we're adding more trees to the perimeter, maybe we're up to seventeen percent or eighteen percent or whatever that calculation for trees turns out to be.
I mean, here's, here's a thing that we need to think about if, if, and, and for staff to think about. If they come back and this becomes a community garden, the last thing we want to see them do is go shoulder to shoulder evergreens and block all the sun out of their garden. And unless they're potato farmers, they aren't going to grow much.
Well, that's the other thing. If they're going to have a garden, they'll have to have water and everything, you know, in there. I mean, they have to plan for that. That can't be.
Right. But that's why I don't think we can even, you know, get them close to their nine hundred and some trees. So let's let staff take a look at it and see what their end use is. As long as it's, meets their fifteen percent landscaping, we're golden and so is staff. So is a developer at that point.
I, I have a comment. Do we want to put a limitation on when this is going to be, the, the plan for this is going to be put in place? Like, for example, by the end of phase two, they have to have their plan for what they're going to put there?
It's part of, it's part of phase one.
So, so you're saying by, by phase one, they have to make this determination of how this is going to be used?
Yeah, because that is part of phase one construction. So it gets submitted as phase one.
So then that the appropriate landscaping would have to be determined as a part of that?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't understand. And we're talking about fifteen percent landscaping, but we still haven't addressed the fact that, you know, we have to be able to make this finding that says it's not just a private interest, that there's some public benefit for them to have this exception of fifteen percent as opposed to twenty percent. So we sort of have that to deal with and that may affect this triangle as well.
Well, that doesn't necessarily hold true that if we agree with fifteen percent, that it's not a private benefit. We could say that it is appropriate. I mean, that's what we have, that's what we're here for.
How, how is it a public benefit if you allow them fifteen percent opposed to twenty percent? I think that's the finding we have to make.
I think police security could be a benefit.
We had this discussion in the beginning. Is that right? I don't know if Marilyn can clarify or, or it was Claudia?
That's correct. That's one of the findings you need to make.
And we can make that at fifteen percent. We don't have to make it at twenty.
You know, I can make that finding without considering it being a financial benefit to a private party. Because if we're, if they're talking about putting a garden area in there, you're not going to block it out with trees, like I said earlier. Our police department is concerned about security. They want to see in there, okay, that, that's a reasonable answer. You know, I, I think it fits the neighborhood and I think it's providing privacy to the neighbors by putting large trees in there and having them spaced out accordingly. And, and, and you're not putting dogs back in that corner now. You're, you know, you're a little more of a, of a normal recreational area.
Can we have some requirement that the, the edges of that triangle will, that there will be landscaping on where right now it shows there's none in that buffer? Whatever it deter, it ends up being appropriate to the use that you guys decide on, whether it's shrubs or trees, that there will be? Is that something that has, that has to be changed in the PUD or?
That's what Kevin just talked about. It's part of phase one going in, they'll have to meet the landscape requirements. That triangle up there is part of the first initial phase going in, so. Are we, have we beaten this to death?
I can support that.
I can support that, okay. We get a motion?
I, what did we decide on the articulation? That, that they can meet the articulation and that we're comfortable with the backs not having that articulation?
And that's what I'm comfortable with. I don't know about any of the other commissioners.
Now, does that meet B or was staff implying that back and front had to be articulated to meet amendment B?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Our, our take on the findings, and of course, this is a discretionary decision. That's what this body is for. But our take was that code is, you know, basic code, that a PUD needs to go, needs to meet or go above code unless there's a public interest in, in varying it. And so condition B was suggested to, to ensure compliance with basic code.
I'll just say before we make a motion, that's both A and B, that we have to make that finding. And I could maybe say how it's okay, we don't see the articulation from the back. And I could maybe say how, you know, to meet twenty percent, you know, that because of the SEPT head concerns of the police, you know, that maybe there should be a reduction in landscape. But I don't think I could do that for both of those issues that staff had and still make that finding that both of those are for the public benefit as opposed to private, you know, the developer not wanting to, you know, to, to, to invest in it or to, you know, whatever the, the reason is, to take out some units or? So that's where I'm at.
Now, I, I can, I can make the findings. If the front articulation is done per agreement with the calculations that you guys did, then none of them that are visible from outside, that all the fronts that are visible from the outside meet the articulation standards. So landscape phase one meets minimum fifteen percent for landscaping. I can certainly make this. And the, the idea that I, that I see that, the reason that we're here and the reason that we balance these out, I don't see that this is granted solely to confer a private benefit on any person. This just makes sense. Fits in with the neighborhood. The articulation looks good from outside. You're driving down an alleyway, you don't see anything. And I think the intent of the landscaping is met. The intent of the articulation is met, and that's what we're here for. This project makes sense in this, in this area. And I think we've beaten this up and it's something I can, I can feel very comfortable doing with the discussion on the first phase with the landscaping and the visible front articulation. So with that, if there's any more discussion?
Yes, I have a question for Claudia. Claudia, on the tree count in my added condition, do we want a number of trees at a minimum? Or do you want to go with the fifteen percent for trees and fifteen percent for landscaping in your phase one review?
I think the, the fifteen percent on the landscaping should, should cover it.
Just fifteen percent for landscaping?
Right, and then we'll, we can back the tree count off of that.
Okay, thank you.
And then, and you may have more clarification, more discussion on this one, but I've heard a couple of different things on the elevation, on the articulation, I'm sorry, that it would meet articulation on all the fronts and the rears that are visible, was what the discussion was earlier, and then it kind of changed at the last comment. So if you could just clarify that in whatever, whoever makes the motion, we'd appreciate it.
Visible from off the property or from an entrance to the property?
Can we clarify what meets code?
That's what they did at the break. They know they have to go so, so high and so far and.
Front and back?
Just front, not back.
Are we changing any of the yellow?
Well, Angela, that's.
So the yellow is what's proposed in the handbook right now, to be a hundred percent articulated in the front and back.
Everything else that's visible from off the property will meet the front articulation standards.
Correct.
Does that make sense? And sides, yes, front and sides. Commissioner Kaufman, you have any? Commissioner Lot?
I'm, I'm comfortable with the articulation.
I'm, I'm comfortable with the articulation. I wish that they would just do it in the back. I mean, you know, there's a lot of buildings that are pretty ugly where they have to articulate in the back. And I mean, those people are seeing that. It's not like nobody's seeing that. The people that live there are seeing the back of that. And I think it matters to them. It would matter to me, but I'm willing to, you know, go ahead and look at the overall project. And I think that it's really good for this area and that they needed something to fill that land. And this looks like it can do that.
I just, I'll make one more comment before we vote, that I won't be able to support this if we don't make a motion that includes at least either Amendment B or C, because I just can't make this finding of how this benefits the public instead of the private in terms of just the developer's interest. I get that they are trying to make it pencil. There are things about the project that I really like, but we have to make this finding. And in my mind, this is conferring a private benefit. And so I cannot make that, that finding. And so without those amendments, I won't be able to support it.
That's fine. Commissioner Wieske? Have a motion?
If you're ready for a motion, Mr. Chair, I will try it.
Absolutely.
In the case of LDC 13-00036, Sky Vista PUD amendment, bungalows at Sky Vista, based on compliance, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the amendments to be planned unit development subject to conditions. And the first one is additional condition is staff to review and approve landscape of fifteen percent for phase one and phase two. Articulation, highlight, the, the highlighted buildings on the site plan are to receive front, side, and rear articulations. All other front faces and side faces shall be articulated per the reviewed and, and accepted drawings presented to us this evening during our meeting. Those buildings that were agreed to and approved tonight do not require rear articulation.
But they do require front?
Front and side. That's what you guys.
Visible from off the property.
I, I'm, I'm not clear. Maybe the others are. So the, the, the yellow, I understand, all four sides?
Yes.
The rears on none of the other ones?
Correct.
But the front on all the other ones?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and Angela, just come up one more time.
Would you please come up to the microphone, Angela, and agree that I have not misspoken?
Yes, so what we're asking is that on these five buildings that are highlighted, they will have a hundred percent articulation.
Yes.
On the rest of the project, the front and the sides will be a hundred percent articulated to code standards.
Correct.
Got it.
She's just not as wordy as I am, Claudia. Nathan, are you okay with that?
We speak the same language.
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. I think that that's what, what you just suggested is what the P, is what the handbook, what, what the applicant has suggested is already in play, that the hundred percent articulation for those five highlighted units.
But they did, the, the drawings that they provided, and, until you guys did the math tonight and, and verified with the formulas, didn't meet requirements. Now we're increasing the sizes of the articulation to meet standards.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have that mo, do we have the motion?
There was also a setback change requested by Angela this evening. Angela, did you submit that to staff?
Yes, just today though. And it's gone. But basically, the, the west perimeter elevation, I'm sorry, the west perimeter setback minimum shall be twenty-five feet.
Okay. I thought you said thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet is what it should have been, because I miscalculated.
Okay, and it, and it's now to twenty-five feet?
And so when we moved those pods, there's one little area that's twenty-five feet.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
We have a motion.
With amended conditions.
With amended conditions.
And I can now make all of the findings.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I can second that motion, and I can also make the findings.
Okay. Any further discussion? Say no. Thank you. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Let the record show, the motion carries five to one. Good luck with your project. I know.
Item eight, LDC 13-00037, bungalows at Sky Vista.
Will the owner or the owner's representative please step forward? You have fifteen minutes.
Thank you for the record, Angela Foose with CFA, representing the applicant. This is a tentative map that basically will go with the PUD zone change that you just approved. The only difference from what's in your packet to what is being proposed tonight is that we're moving two of the buildings on the west side with two of the buildings in the center of the project. Again, this is where we added those twenty-five additional parking spaces. Everything else should remain the same. I'm available if you have any other questions.
Thank you. Nathan?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. With the, with the condition, staff can recommend approval of the tentative map. One thing maybe to consider discussing is that there, there has been talk of, of providing a closed circuit monitoring for the, for the entrance and the emergency exit. There's nothing in the, in the PUD handbook itself that would require that tentative map. The planning commission may want to consider adding a, a condition to address that police concern, something to the effect of, you know, prior, prior to issuance of building permit, that they demonstrate installation of, of a closed circuit monitoring as they discussed.
Thank you, Nathan. Do we have any disclosures on this issue? Same as before?
Mr. Chairman, I have the same disclosures as the previous Skyview bungalows project.
Commissioner Stapleton?
I met with the applicant and got emails.
Commissioner Woosley?
I also met the applicant, applicant representative.
Commissioner Kaufman?
I also met with the applicant.
Commissioner Locke?
I had a phone conversation with the applicant's representative.
And I have also met with the owner's representative. This is a public hearing. If you requ, if you wish to speak on this item, you do so by filling out a request to speak form and turning it in to my right, your left. I do have one request to speak form, Alan Gess. Hi, Alan.
I've already voiced my opposition to the project.
Thank you for being brief. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Hearing none, seeing none. I'm closing the public comment, bringing it back to the board for questions, comments, or a motion.
Can I ask a brief question?
Go ahead.
Of Claudia or Marilyn? Since I voted no on the PUD, I would support the tentative map because I would support this development in general and how it's laid out, just not the, the, the couple of things in the PUD, the landscaping and the, the other thing. And so I'm wondering if because I voted no on the PUD.
Different item.
This is a separate case. Claudia Hansen, Planning Engineering Manager. This is a separate case with its own set of findings. So you're really looking at different items here. So you're, and you're looking at it on the, the idea that, that, that amendment went through. So with the, with that going through. So you need to look at the conditions for the, for it as a tentative map, not as an overall PUD amendment.
Okay, I can make the findings for the tentative map, just as long as there's no conflict with the stuff in the PUD. It's okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
I'll make.
Motion?
Sure.
Commissioner Stapleton?
In the, in the case of LDC 13-00037, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the tentative map with conditions. And also the amended condition of adding closed circuit TV surveillance.
We have a motion. For the record, does the applicant agree to that condition?
They do agree.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Commissioner Locke. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Once again, good luck with your project. Item nine, LDC 13-00038, South Meadows Phase Three PUD amendment.
Good evening, Vern Close, Senior Planner. This is a city-initiated zoning map amendment from MF 21 to PUD Plan Unit Development as a part, which would make the one-acre site a part of the South Meadows Phase Three PUD. The site is located on the north side of South Meadows Parkway, about six hundred and fifty feet east of its intersection with Double R. This site was originally approved as a fire station site within South Meadows Phase Three. As you all know, the PUD was amended and the, the site was relocated to the Damone Ranch Station area and, and Public Facility Site. The council recently directed staff to process the zoning map amendment to PUD for Planning Unit, to add this to Planning Unit L. The primary concerns related to this are how this project or this parcel interfaces with the MF 21 apartments to the north and to the east. We believe with some modifications to the standards, limiting the height of the buildings to two stories or thirty-five feet unless a special use permit is approved to allow to be increased to fifty-five, as allowed in Planning Unit L. A provision to put solid fencing on the north and east sides to provide buffering. There's two other items. Oh, also a special use permit to allow for operations between eleven PM and six AM. And then compliance with the residential adjacency standards and code with, with regard to signs, architecture, lighting, and noise. We believe that converting this site to Planning Unit L in the South Meadows PUD is appropriate. Because it is such a small site, you're not going to get a very large project there just because of landscaping and setbacks and parking requirements. So we believe it's a reasonable fit. It's an extension of what's there already. And with these modifications, it should interface fairly well with the multifamily to the north and east. Staff is recommending approval. I only received one email, just information on what this project was. And it did, it did not go to the NAV because their meeting was canceled, I believe. Yes. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Vern. We have any questions? Comments? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Kaufman?
In the case of LDC 13-00038, South Meadows Phase Three PUD amendment, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance and approve the amendment to the South Meadows Phase Three, subject to conditions A, as written below, and I can make all the findings.
Second. Seconded by Commissioner Wieske. Any discussion? All in favor on the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show, the motion carries six to zero. Next item, TXT 13-00007, Adult Business License Update. You've waited a long time.
Lauren Barrera, Planning Intern. Tonight I will be discussing the adult business update. Under the First Amendment of the United States Constitution, the courts have determined that adult businesses are protected and are only to be regulated by their secondary effects. This significantly limits the city's discretion in sections of the code. The amendments reflect these restrictions. The code currently requires that businesses operating between eleven PM and six AM require a special use permit. This amendment adds adult businesses as an exception to this requirement. However, if the adult business is not located in the industrial zoning districts, it still must obtain a special use permit to operate for more than seventeen hours in a twenty-four hour period. The code has certain locational criteria for adult businesses. A waiver allows City Council to overlook the locational criteria for adult businesses as long as all of the findings of a waiver are met. This amendment further defines the criteria for a waiver by establishing measurable distances to each finding. With this, I want to note for the record that in the proposed ordinance on page seventy-five, the amendment to section eighteen oh eight, two oh two, B, one, E, subsection three should read one thousand five hundred feet, not one thousand five hundred square feet. I apologize for the mistype. The amendment also removes adult businesses as an allowed use with a special use permit in the downtown Reno Regional Center, Wells Avenue District. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? Comments? Motion?
I'll wait till everybody else has answered their questions.
I have no, no questions. We have a comment?
I was just going to say this looks like a cleanup to the code to make sure we're not liable, and I support it. I, I get what we're doing, so I can make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Wieske?
My turn, Mr. Chairman.
Your turn.
Good. In the case of TXT 13-00007, Adult Business Update, based upon compliance with the applicable considerations, I move to recommend that City Council approve the text amendment by ordinance, and I can make all the findings.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion, Commissioner Stapleton.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you. Next item, TXT 13-00006, Convenience Store and Service Station Modification.
Again, Lauren Barrera, Planning Intern. I'll be discussing the convenience store and service station amendment. In public meetings for the Midtown District and Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan, community members have expressed their concern over the sale of alcohol at convenience stores in these districts. By definition, convenience stores as a use allow for all alcohol sales. This amendment restricts the sale of alcohol at convenience stores in the Midtown District to be beer and wine only. The definition of a convenience store also allows for accessory gas sales. As proposed, this amendment will disassociate gas sales from convenience stores so that the two uses are separate from each other. In this case, they would each be treated as a primary use and would be regulated in this manner. The amendment of the phrase "service station" to the more commonly used phrase "gas station" will better reflect the allowed use. The phrase "service station" is also mentioned throughout code and was changed to "gas station" with this amendment. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for questions.
Thank you. We have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. I apologize, but I think this is an important one. So in terms of what used to happen at "service station," there's probably an automobile repair, smog, all of that, separate use. Okay, and so what does it mean? Does this mean that every convenience store can now not have gas or, or that they're two separate uses so that you, that both have to be in allowed use in order to have a convenience store with gas?
Right, it's treated as two separate uses, so they both have to be allowed to have that kind of operation.
So that if you had a gas station and it was in an area where there wasn't convenience stores allowed, which probably doesn't happen, then you couldn't have a convenience store in the gas station? But it, so it's two, it's two uses on the same parcel?
That's correct. You can have, you would have two primary uses. And there's some, and they're looked, they're looked at differently throughout towns. As you know, some areas don't want convenience stores, but they're okay with a gas station. And so we, and then we also had, since it was called "service station," the definition of it, as you saw in the text amendment, really. of it, as you saw in the text amendment, really focused more towards auto repair, which is a separate use than, than a gas station. So it's just clarifying all those and separating them so we can look at them differently. So we can limit, it's okay to have a gas station, but not okay to have a convenience store, or vice versa, depending on the area.
Okay, and then last question, but most importantly. So, I did attend some of the Midtown meetings, and I got from those meetings that they were concerned with convenience stores, alcohol sales things associated with that in the Midtown District, following, there's a limitation on convenience stores and liquor sales in downtown, as well as in Wells Avenue. How does just limiting the sale of beer and wine, or just limiting the sale of hard alcohol, so it's just beer and wine, how does that get them there at all?
And I'll jump in here, since Lauren wasn't at those meetings, and I, I think I attended all of them. Maybe I missed one. Anyway. They, this was a request specifically from that working group, that they still wanted the ability to have, I think Wedge was the example, that if Wedge could be considered a convenience store because it has household, I forget what the term is in the convenience store definition, but household supplies as cheese and bread, and they wanted to be able to serve wine there also. So they want to have that ability to have a shop like Wedge to still be able to serve wine if it was, if it was considered a convenience store, and by definition, it would be.
When we were doing this for Wells Avenue, we specifically, that issue came up, that we wanted to limit convenience stores with the associated issues, but we didn't want to limit, for example, a small, like something like Kraft, or, you know, a small, you know, wine and beer and cheese grocery store. And wasn't there a way that we did that? What, what defines a convenience store? Is it square feet?
Yes.
And how does Wedge, I mean, Wedge serves food also, so how would that be a convenience store? If that's the example?
Under the current definition, Wedge would fall into a convenience store because it serves groceries, basically.
Even though they have a deli? Don't they have a deli, make sandwiches?
I'm, I'm not sure if they do or not. But they, and I can't remember what the issue was on Wells. I know we limit, there are, convenience stores are not allowed in certain areas in Wells. So they were just outright.
I think we limited packaged liquor licenses.
There, and there's a cap, there is a cap on packaged liquor.
I don't think.
Package liquor licenses, which is separate, which is a business license issue, not a land.
Is that also going forward? That, that's something, there's a cap on business.
No, that's in Wells.
Right.
That's what we did in Wells, not in Midtown. We brought that forward, and they were not interested in that.
Okay. I'm concerned that this doesn't, I just feel like there's, there would be another way to do this and not, you know, to account for businesses like Kraft and still limit convenience stores like we did on Wells, because I don't think this gets them there. But I, if this is what they wanted, I will support it.
This is what they requested, that to allow convenience stores, but to limit it to just beer and wine.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Kaufman.
This may be splitting hairs, but "service station," that kind of an old term, I mean, shouldn't it be like a fuel station?
Well, that's why we've removed it with this ordinance.
Okay.
Claudia, question. The difference between a convenience store and a grocery store is square footage?
Yes.
Not product?
Correct. It's five thousand square feet is the.
Oh, sorry. So, so a convenience store is much, is, its definition is based on square footage. Convenience store with gas is two separate uses, will not be allowed at all in the future in the Midtown area? Or will it be allowed under a special use permit?
You'll have the Midtown ordinance before you in February, I believe, where they've, that was one, something they were concerned about is that they didn't, actually, I think auto repair and gas stations are prohibited in Midtown as a draft, and then convenience stores are allowed with only beer and wine. But you'll see that ordinance next month.
So who's going to sell hard liquor in the Midtown area? Package?
It would have to be a larger grocery store. Or a larger specialty store, like a, like a Benz is larger than five thousand square feet. So something like that would be allowed.
So in order to, to buy hard liquor, packaged liquor, in the Midtown area after all this has gone through over the next thirty, sixty, ninety days, it is going to be a retail store, grocery store, over five thousand square feet with the appropriate liquor license?
Correct.
I don't know what encompasses Midtown. Like, I don't know where that is.
Midtown is roughly California Avenue is the north boundary, Regency is the south boundary, where Bricks is. Plumas to the west, and.
Holcomb?
Holcomb, thank you, to the east.
Okay. So all the existing convenience stores with hard alcohol are grandfathered?
Correct.
And there's probably eight to ten of those in that twenty-square-block area?
Probably. I don't know specifically how many.
And so this is a, this is, from now on, any new ones are prohibited? So the idea is, over the years, those will drop off, and eventually, probably not for ten or twenty years, there will be none set selling hard alcohol, and they will all be selling only beer and wine?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's what, we had the discussion with that group on when you set a cap on anything, whether it's pawn shops or liquor sales or whatever, what happens is you basically create a ring, or the potential of creating a ring of those uses around the area if it is a demand in that area.
Right. So that's why Midtown has a proliferation of these, because there's limitations on Wells and limitations downtown. But we put a cap, I think, in Wells and downtown, as opposed to an outright. Okay, thanks.
So Claudia, then, a specialty store would not be allowed in the Midtown area to sell hard, hard alcohol?
Correct. They could just sell beer and wine.
Whether it be a wine store? Or not?
Correct.
Okay, and the only reason I'm, I'm thinking out loud and asking that question is, what does that do in the future? Are we creating a problem for ourselves or the community is, I mean, by not allowing certain businesses? I mean, I look at where there's a five thousand square foot space in that area of Midtown, and it's hard for me to think of a five thousand square foot area where a grocery store may go into, but I guess it's not that important.
Isn't, I mean, isn't that an area that we're trying to promote foot traffic or alternative besides cars?
Right.
You know, I mean.
So they just walk outside the Midtown area to go buy their hard liquor, and they, that's that? But the bars and everybody else can still sell it, just not package out the door?
Correct.
Okay. Sorry. No, I won't.
Last one. What if it was limited to, you couldn't make a specialty grocery store so that you could put a cap on convenience stores? Specialty grocery store that didn't sell tobacco products? I know this. No, I, I agree. Because, because the issue is not hard alcohol, the issue is convenience stores that, what was happening on Wells is that they're essentially selling, you know, tobacco products that are drug paraphernalia, but you can't say they're drug paraphernalia unless they've got drugs in them, right? And you've got panhandlers, and you've got some stores that, trust me, anybody on this commission would be scared to walk into. That was our issue, and that's a similar issue on Midtown. And so to get there, I'm just thinking about how you get there, you know? You don't want to eliminate, you know, Wedge with specialty beer and wine, you know? But you do want to eliminate those stores, you know, and it's basically tobacco products. I don't know if you could do it around tobacco products. I know it's too late, this doesn't matter, but just thinking out loud, sorry.
But would that solve it if you, could you, you still sell paraphernalia even if there wasn't tobacco?
Right, but you could do a definition where a specialty wine and beer, you could do a specialty wine and beer store that does not sell tobacco products. You could make that definition so that then you would create a new definition for, I know this is not going to happen, you create a new definition for something like Wedge, which, and then you could do a straight limitation on convenience stores, including hard alcohol, you know, cigarette, you know, everything, but maybe do a limit, not a cap, not an all-out prohibition.
Well, and we have the.
I do think you're getting some distance away from what is before you in speculating.
We are, I apologize.
Yes.
I mean, this, this ordinance change, though, is an answer to this issue, so, you know, throwing out other ways to answer this issue without creating, you know, what could create in the long run may be unintended consequences. So, throwing that out there, but probably not appropriate to try to redo this whole thing now, and this, if this is what they want, I'll support it.
Okay. We'll entertain a motion from somebody? Anybody? Commissioner Wieske?
Okay. Mr. Chairman? In the case of TXT thirteen dash zero 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 six, Convenience Store and Service Station Modification, based upon a compliance with the applicable considerations, I move to recommend that City Council approve the text amendment by ordinance, and I have made all the findings.
I can second the motion. I can make the findings.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain. I do not feel like this has been discussed the way that it should be. I don't, I, I can't make a decision based on this amount of time. So I abstain.
Okay. So we have five in favor, one abstain. Motion carries five zero one. Item twelve, TXT thirteen dash zero 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 eight, Moratorium Regarding Digital Billboards. Whoopie. Who's handling that one?
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney. This is initiation by the City Council. This moratorium is in response to two lawsuits that were filed in response to the digital billboard. And as I put into the staff report, if we were to allow digital billboards to be erected, to have building permits issued for them and erected, and the, it's on, and then the ordinance was found unconstitutional, there could be a question as to whether those billboard owners would have a right to keep those billboards. So to prevent that problem and question, City Council initiated a moratorium on the digital billboards for the duration essentially of the two lawsuits through the appeal period. And in that vein, I would ask you to add to the last sentence of subsection eight. It says have been fully resolved and all appeals, appeals are exhausted. Just to make it absolutely clear what we're talking about. It's on the, on the last page of it, in the section eighteen sixteen fifteen hundred, subsection A, and it's an addition to the very last portion of that paragraph. And again, the language that we propose is "and all appeals are exhausted." On the last page.
Mr. Chairman? I'll make a motion when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Is there any discussion? No?
In the case of TXT one-three dash zero 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 eight, Moratorium Regarding Digital Billboards, I move to recommend City Council adopt a moratorium on the acceptance of application to convert static billboards to digital billboards. And I would like to modify, submit the modification to the last sentence of section eighteen point sixteen point fifteen hundred, paragraph A, to add the words "and all appeals are exhausted." And I can make all those findings.
We have a motion.
And I'll second.
And we have a second by Commissioner Kaufman. Any discussion on the motion? I, I just have one comment. I think it's, this is a sad state of affairs, but it's just my personal opinion. You worked for how many years writing it, writing up an ordinance, and it goes back and starts over from nothing, and then, well, anyway, I think it's a sad state of affairs. I truly do. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Five to one in favor. Motion carries. Item thirteen, TXT thirteen dash zero 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 nine, Deletion of Off-Premise Advertising on On-Premise Signs.
And again, Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney, this is simply cleanup, part of the ordinance that you recommended the City Council adopt. They ultimately did. It did, there's language in two different definitions. They are the mirror, the, the language is a mirror of each other regarding allowing twenty percent of off-premises advertising displays on on-premise signs. We remove that as questionable constitutional from one definition and somehow failed to remove it from the other definition. So this is simply cleanup to get that taken care of.
Thank you, Marilyn. Do we have any questions? Discussion? Motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wieske?
Go ahead, Commissioner Woosley.
Commissioner Woosley.
Sorry.
Like to make a motion?
Go ahead.
Case number TXT one-three dash zero 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 nine, deletion of off-premise advertising on on-premise signs. I move to recommend that the City Council delete the following sentence. Any display which is composed of at least eighty percent of on-premise display is an on-premise sign, from RMC eighteen two four two zero three four five seven zero, guessing paragraph twenty-three.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Item eight, Trucky Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wieske?
I just want, have one thing to report. Kim Robinson has been reappointed with a short-term, I believe a short-term contract. I have, didn't, have not talked to her personally, for Director of the Trucky Meadows Regional Planning Board.
Thank you.
Planning Commission, sorry.
And the next, next meeting, Executive Director. Oh, agency.
Agency.
Next meeting is when?
Next meeting is February?
Next Wednesday.
No, next Wednesday, yes. Sorry. Next Wednesday. I haven't seen, for regional planning.
A thrill a minute, a laugh an hour. He should come down and spend a Wednesday afternoon at County Commission Chambers. Okay, staff announcements. Report on status of planning, announcements, all the above?
The other thing I have is we have a TOD workshop coming up at the end of January, so you will be hearing from Michelle to set a date for that sometime in the last two weeks of January. Figured we'd wait to get through the holidays, everybody has a new schedule, and we will get you the draft, the latest draft in ample time to review that before the workshop, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner's Suggestions for Future Agenda Items. Anything? Hearing nothing? Public comment? Commissioner Wieske?
I'm sorry. Under, under future suggestions, I'd like to make a suggestion to Chief Pitts that his officers, or officer who puts together meaningful staff report, or report to add to our staff report, gets it turned in in a timely manner so that we can review it and we can really work hard at including, at least in discussion, their items of concern. I, for one, the last twelve years have worked hard, from the NAB level on up to Planning Commission, to take into consideration what the Police Department, the Fire Department, engineers, staff has offered and has put in reports by reading their documents completely. And when we get something fifteen minutes before a meeting starts, and it's a well-written three or four-page document, you know, there's things in here that we discussed that I, I think we did. think we did a good job of discussing, but we were kind of caught off guard by getting it at the last minute. And we could have dealt with this, with the applicant's representative before we came to the meeting and maybe had some things worked out instead of in chambers.
I, I agree. Maybe that can be worked out from staff.
And I would-
I actually just met with the, the officer who supervises that, and we were switching some deliverable times with them to improve.
Okay. I mean, I hope so, because you-
Give them more time to review.
It's, it's a benefit to, for staff to have it too, in the way staff deals with the applicant, and it's, it's something that's really a benefit for all of us to take place before we get in to an active meeting in chambers.
This public comment item is to allow the public to provide general public comment and not for comment on individual action items contained on this agenda. Anyone? Hearing and seeing no one, I will close public comment, and this meeting is now adjourned.